I'm sorry to disrupt those of you in the back that are having conversations. We're getting ready to start our meeting. To begin with, we're going to have, is our chaplain here? We'll have a prayer offered by our PCSO chaplain, Joe Samoz. Following that, I'd like to ask Supervisor Sertie if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And those who wish to join, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to the best we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Could you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Supervisor Sertie and our chaplain. To begin with Supervisor Kavanaugh is going to be joining us telephonically. Is that correct?
Yes Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
I am on the line.
Thank you.
Okay. Because we have a scheduling conflict, we have our council that's going to be joining us. We're going to need to take a recess in order to have a conversation with our council, and that'll be around 2:00. And that'll be for items 25 and 26, and 29. So to begin with, we've begun, it is dated, it's our Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting dated Wednesday, October 30th, and would like to welcome everybody here. To begin with, we'll have our county managers report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let you and the public know that our economic development and communications team have won a couple of awards at the Arizona Association for Economic Development at their fall forum last week here in Flagstaff. And one award they won was a marketing brochure. Happen to have a copy here, but it's also on our website. It includes highlights of our communities, our business climate, our talent and workforce, our strategic location logistically, and the quality of life. And so that won for marketing brochure. And then we also won for multimedia promotion. You've probably seen the video, but we did a partnership with Blossom Media, and we highlighted our communities and elected officials and economic development leaders in our county. We're all a part of that, Apache Junction, Coolidge, Queen Creek, Casagrand, Maricopa. And they won an award for that. So thank you to both of those teams on their great work.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Can they get copies of that brochure?
Yeah, yeah, we have copies of this brochure for anybody that would want it, and we can get it for you.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, item number two, presentation of certificates of employees that have been here for 20 years. Leo?
Thank you Chairman. I'm going to go just slightly out of order, just because I wanted to first recognize and thank somebody who I don't believe is present with us today, and I think she's the only one not present, so I wanted to make sure to recognize and congratulate her first. Teresa Barr with the Recorder's Office has been with us 20 years, is a deputy recording supervisor. And I don't know for sure if Ms. Lewis is wanting to say any words, or if she's here on that behalf. Yeah, thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Lou. The reason Teresa's not here today is because we are in the sleuths of in-person early voting. We have had record turnout this election cycle. I'd like to thank Mr. Sertie for his assistance in identifying how our lines were around the building, and to an amazing, amazing individual that is Teresa Barr. She shows up every day, and she encourages her staff, she is resilient, and she encourages other supervisors. I wish she was here to accept her word, but again, we are so blessed to have Teresa. So I hope you're watching Teresa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have Tammy Smith, who has been with us for 20 years, and she is a deputy clerk in the clerk of the Superior Courts Office. I believe Ms. Padilla may be here to accept and speak.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. I want to say that Tammy has been a dedicated employee for the clerk of the Superior Courts Office for the past 20 years. She's worked in my court and clerk department. She's such, she has such a positive attitude. She is just the kindest person that you'll ever meet. She's also the person that will always just be so helpful to any new clerk that's coming into the department. She has, I mean, her integrity is at the highest level. She's just been such a wonderful person to work with, and she's been known to always go that extra mile for any employee in the office, and she's always willing to help cover for any extra hearing that kind of pops up, which happens every day. But she's just been, she's provided just a commitment to the clerk's office for the last 20 years, and it's just never wavered. And she's just been such an invaluable asset to our department, and I can't be more honored to be here just to congratulate her for the last 20 years, and there's no one more deserving She's very nervous.
So, is she going to say something to us, or is she too nervous?
I think she's too nervous.
[laughing]
I'm truly honored to be recognized for my 20 years, but what I would like to say is that prior to me coming on to work for Pinal County, I had attempted four years straight in a row to get employed with the county, and my application was never reviewed or whatever, but I was summoned to jury duty. And at that time, Chrissy UC Reese was a clerk, and I had told her that I was trying to get on with the county, and at that time, she asked me to put my application in. And I put my application in, and it has been history since then. And so I'm truly honored to have my clerk, Becca Padilla, as well as my manager, Ms. Ash, and then I have my husband here as well, also to come and support me. But I truly thank God for my team that I have, because without a great team over you, you can't accomplish what all you need to accomplish in life. So I'm truly honored this morning, and I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you. Leo, it sounds like we need to update that to 24 years then.
That's right, that's right. What a great story, and we need to start doing more jury duty recruitment. Next we have Andrew Silves from Juvenile Court Services, has been with us 20 years, is a surveillance officer, and I believe we have maybe Jeannie Bradner here to speak.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I am fairly new in my position, not quite a year yet, so I had no idea I was speaking today, so on the fly. I am grateful to have wonderful employees that were here in place when I came into my position, and Andy certainly is one of them. Those of you that have children, have grandchildren, have nieces, nephews, teenagers, know how difficult it can be day in and day out with kids these days and social media, and that has escalated when we have kids involved with the court. And so Andy has certainly been a staple of the Juvenile Court Services Division and the community in looking out for the best interest of youth and the community. So thank you Andy for your 20 years of service. As was previously stated, I'm Jeannie Bradner, Director of Juvenile Court Services. Thank you.
I'm not a talker, but thank you for my supervisors and my coworkers who have managed to make it, man. Again, same thing, I wouldn't be here without them. Thank you.
Next we have another employee from Juvenile Court Services who's been with us 20 years, is detention officer, Brianna Webb.
Again, good morning Jeannie Bradner, Director of Juvenile Court Services. Brianna Webb has been with us for 20 years, and similar to what I stated about Andy, it's a very difficult job working with youth, and Brianna has been in our juvenile detention facility, which is even more difficult, because she's seeing youth on any given day that aren't there in their best time, at their best moment. I'm really excited to again have inherited Brianna and look forward to her leadership. She was also recently promoted. It's great to keep employees for 20 years, but it's even better when they can promote to leadership positions. So congratulations Brianna on your 20 years of service.
Thank you for everybody at Juvenile Court Services. This has been an amazing 20 years, and I'm looking forward to the next 20.
Thank you Brianna, and I'll just mention, my notes here say that a lot of these employees are not comfortable speaking here in public.
Okay.
So thank you to all of them, because we appreciate your stories and your kind words are encouraging to all of us. So thank you for that, and we appreciate you getting out of your comfort zone. Next we have-
Oh, Leo, real quick, they're taking off. We want to get a photo.
Oh, yeah, please stay. We'll have a big group photo here at the end. Next we have Laura Anderson from Public Defense Services, who's been with us 20 years and is a legal interpreter. And good morning Paul.
Good morning Leo, good morning members of the board, Chairman Goodman. First of all, my name's Paul Lovelace, I'm the operations manager for Public Defense Services, and I have the incredible honor of getting to manage Loura Anderson here. She actually came from us from the courts. She started back in 2004, has been an interpreter her entire time since then, and has also worked in the law library while she was doing her interpreter work, and then also did some payroll and billing paperwork. After that, she came over to Public Defense Services, and I can tell you that from the moment that I got to meet Loura, you could just tell that she has an incredibly kind demeanor, and really compassionate for people that she's working with. And it's a really important thing for all of our attorneys, as they're trying to build a relationship with their clients, to have someone that's compassionate and that can really just express what the attorney's trying to convey. And that's something that really all of the lawyers that have worked with us have said is that Loura's extremely empathetic to the clients and really works well to make sure that they understand what they were told, which is probably one of the most important things about criminal justice, is that these people going through understand what's going on, what's being said to them, what's going to happen to them. And Loura's been doing that, and when I actually went back and looked at her file, her former supervisor, Sabina Michaels, was also somebody who, that was something that she said about Loura, is that she is just an incredibly compassionate individual and very empathetic to the people that she worked with, both the families. Back then as a court interpreter, she interpreted for victims, witnesses. So we're just incredibly grateful to continue to keep her here. She's extremely committed to her work here at Pinal County, and I'm grateful to be able to continue to work with her.
Thank you, thank you Paul.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been an incredible journey, and I am very thankful. Thank you all.
Last but not least, we have Katrina Solis, who is in Superior Court Administration, who's currently a Court Services Program Manager, has been with us for 20 years. And I know we have worked on a variety of projects, and she does a great job.
Good morning Board. Todd wasn't able to be here this morning, he had power commitment. I just want to take a quick moment to let you know how grateful we all are for Pinal County leadership. We have exemplary leaders in this county, leaders that become mentors and friends, and I have grown personally and professionally here, so thank you very much.
Thank you Katrina.
Well, thank you everybody for celebrating here with us, and we're ready for the group photo now.
There you go. And make sure I can see McClure going between there. There you go. There you go. You know what? Goodman, come over. Miller, Miller, you're not chairman, there you go. There we go. Okay, now we look fantastic. Okay, here we go. Everybody look here in three, two. Love it, we're going to do it again, because somebody always blinks and never fails. Three, two, one. Okay, everybody smile this time. You're actually happy. Look at that fantastic picture. Three, two. There we go, thank you.
Okay. I think that's indicative of the environment that we have here, when employees stay that long and perform their duties as well as they do. So we appreciate our employees and we're grateful that we do this on a regular basis, recognizing them. Okay, item number two, three, Supervisor District Updates. We'll begin with Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. One of the important things we have going on are the food banks preparing for the holiday season, and we have the two food pantries in Maricopa and the one in Coolidge Hope, and they'll be looking for volunteers. If anyone wants to volunteer and make someone's holiday season brighter, please lift them up and volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sertie?
Yeah, several weeks ago, you know, there was a devastating hurricane that hit all the way inland into the Carolinas, and we have a resident in Gold Canyon whose family owns Gold Canyon Cafe, his name is Scott Koger. And, you know, a lot of times when you, people want to donate, they want to help, but they don't know if their money or their help actually gets to where it needs to go. So he took it upon himself just to load his truck and a trailer full of what he could buy and take. And people heard about this. He didn't even solicit anybody, they just started bringing him stuff, and he drove a whole truckload and trailer to North Carolina and gave it out. And he doesn't even know I'm saying this, like I said, the guy did this totally under the radar, but this is a hero that needs some recognition, that didn't even want recognition. But that's an awesome way to do that, I thought. And also, the oldest community in my district, and in one of the oldest ones in the whole county, is Superior, and they haven't had a lot of infrastructure upgrades since the 1950s, including in their high school and their football field, their locker room. And they entered into a nationwide contest to get a grant to actually provide and come in and build them this, but they need votes. It depends on how many people come in and click and vote, and they can win and have a completely new football field built. And so I have details coming up here in a video, and I think there's going to be a link at the end on how you can just simply click on it and vote and help them get new facilities at no cost to the taxpayer. So can we watch that?
The finalists to win a million dollar facility upgrade. Superior High School, a small 1A school about 60 miles east of the valley, is one of 16 finalists in the T-Mobile Friday Night Lights contest. 1,700 schools entered this thing from all across the country, and Superior with just about 135 kids in the entire school is one of the last schools standing. It all comes down to Instagram likes. So go like this video on the Superior USD 15 IG page. The winning school gets a multimillion dollar grand prize, which includes a new field. And these guys, they rarely lose at home. So a new field only going to enhance the environment.
Oh yeah, our field's been here since around the 50s, and the facilities, it all went up at the same time, so our locker room, our field, it's really outdated, it's 70 years old. It means everything to me, man. It's been my dream since I was a little kid, from ball boy to junior high ball to high school ball, and then to coaching, and that sideline's been like my home. Oh, it's definitely a football town. As far back as I can remember, one understands that this is once in a lifetime for us, so everyone's rallying, even the neighboring small-town mining communities, they're rallying around with us. A brand-new football facility fit in perfect to that environment.
So there's the scorecard, I think right now they're in seventh place, and it's within reach. So Natasha, how can they get the details on how to do that? Go to that Instagram?
They can go to the Instagram website.
Right there, so everybody take a snapshot of that. And let's help them out. That's it for me.
Supervisor Miller?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I just have one here that I want to put out, and if we have a meeting on the 6th, I'll re-announce it again, but on the 9th, out at the Atesa Speedway, which is south on Bianco Road till there's no more road, there's going to be a Speed Fest, but it's to honor our veterans, and the proceeds for that will go to some veterans organizations. So just mark that on your calendar. The weather ought to be pretty nice, and I think it's an all-day function.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yeah, me, thank you. Thank you Mr. Chairman. Let's see, week and a half ago or so, we had the Pinal County Safety Rodeo, which is kind of a field trip for public works. We have six or seven counties represented, 12 jurisdictions represented, they all come out and see who can drive the front loader better, or they can move the egg from the pile of sand over and put it in the red cup, you know, who's the best? And it's really a lot of fun, and so we've got a video to show.
Pinal County 31st Annual Safety Rodeo.
We're at the 2024 Pinal County Safety Rodeo.
I think today we have 12 agencies here, seven different counties, and then a few cities from inside Pinal County.
We've got people from as far north as Apache County, all the way down to Yuma County, as well as many of the cities.
It's a great way for all the public works groups to get together and just have a friendly competition.
Get to meet each other, use their skills on the heavy equipment.
And build some camaraderie between the different agencies, which is a great thing.
I think it's really important to have all of our crews that are out there every day to come and have a day where they can relax a little bit, have some fun, see how they're doing, a little safe and happy competition. I think it's a really good way to bring up the morale.
I think just promoting safety in general is great, and getting to try out new equipment. I noticed some of this equipment is not county-owned, so brand-new equipment, get to check it out and see how it works.
You know, just ran and hit some cones, you know what I mean? The standard is different this year, but it was good, liked it. These cones just happened to get in the way. I mean, it's kind of just like taking a bunch of asses to get around it. The cones are pretty close, but other than that, I think it's pretty easy. Hitting cones a lot more than I am now, but it's pretty fun to be here and just go around it. You learn a lot.
It's always nervous when there's competition, everybody tries to do good. Just take your time. It's hard to judge when you're up high, and it's hard to see a lot of the things. When you're on it all the time, you get used to where the bucket's at and how far it's sticking out. I've been on one in a while, so it's a little rusty, but it's fun.
It's just fun to be around everyone and see the different levels of operators that are out here, and you learn some things from some people.
It went alright. It's the first time back being in the joystick, so having to re-educate myself on running it. I did okay being the first time in a joystick in about five years.
This is a public show of what we have to offer.
We pride ourselves here at the county in having a friendly environment.
I think Pinal County has a good culture, and we've been working on that for quite a few years.
Here at the Safety Rodeo, you can try out your skills, maybe try out a new piece of equipment. If you make a mistake, it's okay, it's a safe place. It's a morale booster, something fun, enjoyable, get away from the day-to-day. It's a really great event. As a volunteer, I have a great time here too, helping out and being a part of this event.
I'm supportive of the employees of Pinal County, and I want to come out and support them, and I want to say, hey, how you doing? Thanks for doing your job.
And look forward to next year, where we can have an even better event, make some improvements, and hopefully grow it even more.
So a lot of those toys look like lots of fun to drive. There's no way I was getting one out in front of all those people. I think next year Goodman and I are having a competition on backhoe we're talking about, just for fun. Well, you know, Miller can be the judge, but Goodman and I will take it on. So that was a lot of fun. Anyway, also then I've got one more piece of information, it's about Oracle. We spent, I don't know, a million-plus dollars fixing up the park up there and redoing the bathrooms and all that. Someone decided to come in on, I think Sunday afternoon before the locks closed on the river, and rip the sinks off the wall and rip the lights down. You know, what a waste. So we're putting it all back together, and that's fine, but it's really sad that someone would come in and do that to the community. So anybody out there that's listening to this, if you have information, please call PCSO and let them know. So thank you. That's all I got.
Supervisor Miller, I think you missed a video or something, right?
I just go by the script.
Yeah.
It's not on the script, so don't deviate from the script. That's what I'm told. But we do have a video of our CSA Legislative Summit was held at the auction casino this, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago now? And it was a great event, and I think we've got some pictures of some of the tours, that's Lucid Motors. Here we are at one of the luncheons, and I don't know who those three guys are, but anyway, this summit is for all the supervisors in the state of Arizona come together, and we talk about policies and legislation that may be coming forward to the state legislature during the year. That clock is, I clock, I made that clock. That was kind of interesting. But anyway, everybody had a great time. I went to a transportation summit a week later, and all the crossover of people that went to the both summits were, they kept talking about the CSA summit. And it's all because of our staff here, Natasha and her crew and the CSA crew, they put this thing together. I have nothing to do with the outcome of this, it was these ladies- It was these ladies and Kyle that put all this stuff together. It was success, a big success. And the only thing, the other supervisors from around the state said we set the bar way too high. There's nobody going to, nobody's going to reach what we did. But thank you, Natasha and your crew, for everything you've done there, and it was a great success. And but it's a really, it's very interesting because all the counties come together and we find common ground on the things that affect counties and watch that legislation and either champion it through or defend it, one way or the other. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. And notice on your film, there wasn't any pictures of me in there. I don't understand that. I was there.
You don't come play.
Oh, that's what it was. Okay. Then I would agree with Supervisor Miller. There's a lot of value in our CSA association that we have with CSA and being able to discuss the common things that we have as a state. We need all 15 counties as we get together and discuss things that we could do to improve our counties as a whole. In addition to that, for me, Supervisor, or for District 1 or 2? Which one am I in? District 2? I have a couple of things. One of them is we've done a segment with one of our, with our Public Works where, you know, we get a lot of calls and things of that nature about all the construction and what's going on and why is it taking so long? And we've done a segment called What's Up, Chuck? And so Chuck is over all of Santan Valley area, and so if you've got that video, let's shoot that.
County Supervisor Mike Goodman here from District 2. I'm here with Charles Williams.
I'm our district manager for the Santan Valley area for our Public Works Development Services group.
What we want to discuss is some of the projects and then what we've got going in the future.
We'll drive around and kind of look at projects that are under construction or upcoming in the near future.
Now, we're coming up on Kenworthy here in a minute. Now, there'll be a light right here at Kenworthy and Combs.
Yeah, this is Kenworthy and Combs. There will be a traffic signal here. And then along with Combs, we're also going to establish a new road on Kenworthy from Combs to the Chandler Heights-Ocatillo area. And we're going to extend Kenworthy basically from Chandler Heights south to Combs Road. So it'll be a three-lane facility all the way to Ocatillo.
So we're coming up near the pork shop.
We've got another traffic signal plan for Schneff and Combs. We'll widen Combs Road to a five-lane facility, and we'll add a new traffic signal here at the intersection of Schneff and Combs.
We're on Ocatillo Road, and we're headed to the east. So Ocatillo will be a five-lane road. We're going to have to expand this, and it's going to be pretty difficult, it looks like, because we have washes on both sides.
Yeah, we're going to have to incorporate a lot of drainage into the project to expand, you know, to add a couple more lanes. That's another reason why things take a while. You've got to incorporate all of that, utilities, drainage, traffic patterns, all gets figured into the final decisions.
We're on Skyline right now, but this is the dead end right here.
Yeah, so we're on Skyline east of Gary, where it dead-ends at the Circle Cross subdivision. We're currently in design to extend Skyline all the way out to Gansel Road and add a traffic signal at Gansel Road.
One thing's inevitable, change.
Yep.
Since I've been in office, we've probably spent over $217 million in roads just in Santan Valley alone. We were already expanded quite a bit, and now with us making it easier for people to commute has made a world of difference, in my opinion.
People have always wanted to live here. It was just they had trouble getting in and out.
We're trying to stay up on top of these things the best we can. We're like any family out there when it comes to budget. We have to stay within our budget. The law requires that. So we've got to be creative in what we do and how we go about it. We're getting there, though, right?
Yep, we sure are.
You know, I appreciate you taking the time and driving us around and bringing up the speed on what's taking place.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to drive around Santan with us.
Is it just me, or does the camera put a couple hundred pounds on me?
You were fine.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, the board here supported me in an effort to name the bridge over the Gila River just down the road here on 79 to the Rusty Greer Memorial, a young man that I grew up with, and at the age of 12, he was killed. And we were successful in that renaming or in that naming of that bridge. Town of Florence also was supportive. We're going to be holding a ceremony, small ceremony, short ceremony, on Friday at 12 o'clock. Those that want to attend, you're more than welcome to be there. So I think that's all I've got. So let's go on to item number three, general election report, I mean, number four.
The thing that looks like this.
Yeah. Dana?
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. Just a brief update about where we're at for the 2024 general presidential election. The last day to vote early in person is this Friday, November 1st, up until 7:00 PM at our five satellite offices. Election Day, which is November 5th, polls open at 6:00 AM and do close at 7:00 PM. Reminder to voters that if you are in line at 7:00 PM, you will be able to cast your ballot. Just for forward thinking, our county canvas is scheduled at a normal board of supervisors meeting for November 20th. If you did not get your early ballot in the mail yesterday and get it deposited by the postal service, we strongly encourage those voters to use any of the 17 ballot drop boxes that are conveniently located on county property under recorded and monitored surveillance. Reminder that ballot affidavit envelopes are reviewed for signature verification, and that's how we prove identification of early voters. We've had some reports of people saying that they've witnessed people depositing multiple ballots in those drop boxes. That is normal. You have the ability to carry a ballot for yourself, a spouse, a unit, members of your household, or anybody you are a caretaker for. That is not ballot harvesting. And please know that the check for that is that we do signature verification. Our bi-monthly planning meetings with the Office of Emergency Management for our contingency operations, emergency, power outages, resources, and supports are being accomplished. We have also created the informed command structure protocols, and those are established, and members of so understand their reporting assignments. The improved hands-on poll worker and troubleshooter training have received positive feedback. Our final makeup classes are scheduled for this Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at 9:00 AM. We are having special inspector classes this Wednesday and on Saturday. We have established an emergency poll worker team and election night boards, of course. They've all been identified and have been in contact with staff. All polling location facility contacts have been in communication with our team to ensure a smooth delivery of equipment prior to Monday, and I am pleasantly reassured after watching the Safety Rodeo video. We will be adding more express votes for our duplication process in the tabulation room on election night, so it might look a little different. We currently usually use about six teams. We'll be increasing that between eight and 10 people accomplishing the duplication of ballots. On election day, tabulation staff will be working in staggered shifts to ensure all election day ballots are tabulated. Credentialed political observers have been at our in-person early voting locations, early board tabulation, signature verification spaces. I will say, it has been a pretty wonderful experience for all of our civically engaged volunteers, and I wanted to personally thank several, they know who they are because I've stepped out of my box and I shook in some hands, because their patience with our lines and automatic want to be a part of the process and direct traffic has been really, it's been inspiring, and it's great to see people just being kind human beings again. So thanks for that. In-person early voting turnout has been high, which was expected, but we have been able to manage that flow with some assistance. Reminder that citizens who are engaging in electioneering outside of the 75-foot zone, we have those signs posted for that reason. This is an activity that is protected by the First Amendment, and as long as it does not force, restrain, threaten, injure, harm, or intimidate voters from casting their ballot, it is to be allowed. Pinal County is a precinct-based voting model. Voters not selecting to vote a mail ballot or vote early in person must present to their designated polling location on election day. Due to the MVD glitch, 1,471 members of Pinal voters received documented proof of citizenship letters from our office. We still have 980 that are outstanding. We understand that voters are inundated with mail during election cycles. However, if you receive the letter from the Office of the Recorder, it means that you were registered to vote prior to Prop 200, and somehow in the last like 60 days, you have updated your voter registration record. That automatically means that I have to follow the law and request documented proof of citizenship. Please know that if you go to vote at the polls on election day, you have the ability to utilize the portal to upload your documented proof of citizenship. And remember, your driver's license doesn't prove citizenship, that proves residence. Anybody who is concerned about this, you know, we ask, please, reach out to staff. Come in with your birth certificate, your naturalization form, a current passport. Our staff is willing and eager to assist those voters with that. We currently have about 679 Yuakava voters. We are monitoring the portal for that hourly and in making sure we're communicating with those voters. Security guards were brought on to our satellite offices. That was to monitor safety of staff when retrieving ballots from our ballot drop boxes to help with flow of voters during in-person early voting. And so we've received some calls about why we have security. We do this every presidential election or general election. It's not new, but people have asked questions, and we've been able to field those calls. The curing team is currently working through about 300 affidavits that are either missing their ballot, there is no signature on their affidavit, or their signature does not match their registrant record. #TeamPinal. The cure slogan is "When in Doubt, Take It Out." So if your signature does not match the signature that's in your registrant record or does not match the key points as established in law, we're required to reach out to those voters to cure that affidavit. So our team is calling, emailing, sending letters. If you've received one of those calls, we ask that you please promptly call us back because the quicker those early ballots get through the process, the better we are at with tabulation. Want to remind everybody that the first set of results will be posted right around 8:00 PM on election night. This will be all of the early ballots that were tabulated to that point. The next set of results that you will see will be posted about every hour thereafter as the polling locations are shutting down and bringing those ballots back to Central Count. And then, of course, late early numbers, provisional ballot counts, and our hash value reports will all be posted to the main elections website. Here's some numbers for you guys. We have issued or sent out early ballots, 210,590. We have accepted 114,798. In the 20 days of early voting at our five locations, we have had almost 12,000 people vote early in person. That is a record for Pinal County. So everybody who's pushing for people to get out there and vote early in person, thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you to the amazing team in Pinal County at the Recorder's offices and election cycle temps who are making this happen. Always like to put a little bit of competition out there. When we were embarking on the general election cycle and all of us were out there talking about voter education outreach, we threw it out there and said, we were wondering who's going to have the best voter turnout for in-person or early voters. I will say that Saddle Brook is over 75% right now, so. I will say, Mountain Brook, though, is biting at your heels. So, gentlemen, chairman, vice chair, members of the board, county management, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dana.
Yes.
Chair Ken Volk, Pinal County Attorney. Under this agenda item, I wanted to update the board and the public at large regarding the litigation. I know most of you have been updated, but I think it's important because Pinal County, quite frankly, has been malign publicly. I think there's been a lot of puffery that has existed. This is the reality. This board, months ago, made a determination that we were going to do precinct voting. There are only two counties in the entire state that do precinct voting. That is not the way most people want to vote. And just so everybody is very clear, precinct voting means you have to show up to the precinct that you live in at your dedicated location to cast a vote. You can't show up anywhere. Most of the other counties have gone, I don't care where you show up, show up wherever you want to show up, and you can cast your vote. For election integrity reasons and a lot of other reasons, this board has made the decision they made. The Secretary of State in the cloak of darkness essentially said, I'm going to do an end-around on your desire to only allow precinct-based, and we're going to allow those accessible voting devices to cast a vote for any precinct as long as you show up and you ask for it. We took the position, hey, that is undermining the authority of this board to run elections as they see fit. So again, our Secretary of State has talked a lot about how we are disenfranchising voters, about how we are going to refuse voters, and there are voters that are not going to be able to vote because of the decision that you made. That's baloney. Let me be very clear. Show up to the precinct in which you are registered. If you have a question, call Dana and call her team. We will do everything we can to help you. And if you happen to show up at the wrong precinct, we will tell you where the correct precinct is. We will tell you how to get there, but if you want to vote, you have to. And ultimately, we've went through both our Superior Court. We went to the appellate court in Division 2 down in Tucson, and they essentially continued the matter. And then the Supreme Court actually took it up. And the Supreme Court, while not ruling on the underlying merits, essentially said, hey, it's too late in the game for the rules to be changed. Pinal County is going to continue as a precinct-based, and the votes are only going to count if they show up in the precinct. And I will tell you, to give you and the public at large, I guess, some relief, the United States Supreme Court took this very issue up in the state of Arizona in 2018 and said precinct-based voting is valid. It's appropriate, it's constitutional. So we believe we stand on good grounds. Obviously, there are additional agenda items at the end of the calendar today where we're going to ask you for further guidance, but under election preparation, we have to be very clear. Dana and her team are great, and they have a great relationship with the Secretary of State's office, and she doesn't want to do anything to fracture that. I'm going to be a little more candid. This county did nothing wrong. We didn't do it exactly the way that they wanted it, and we said we didn't have to. We believe that we're right. But the message we have to take from here is for all of our voters that are listening and everybody's here, you have to show up to your precinct. And as long as you show up to your precinct, we'll count your vote. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes. So I feel inclined to comment, but it's probably not the right time, so letting people know that we probably will have this on an agenda someday where we can discuss what we will be doing going forward. Yeah, we can. We'll talk about that at the very end of our meeting when it has an opportunity. Okay? All these people will be gone there, so I'm just letting them know. Maybe they'll stick around. Yeah, I doubt it. Okay. Item number five, discussion approval/disapproval of the Code Compliance Month proclamation. And is David here? There you are.
It is here. Good morning, Chairman Goodman, supervisors, Todd Williams, Deputy Director, Community Development with Development Services. So it's my pleasure and honor today to help introduce a proclamation for Pinal County, and I'll introduce our new Code Compliance Manager here in a minute. But I wanted to recognize the team that basically the Code Enforcement League of Arizona has proclaimed October is National Code Compliance Month. We essentially want to recognize our team here as well at Pinal County. You know, this is a group of dedicated individuals who do exceptional work. They're very professional in the work that they do, and they're truly dedicated to public service. We're extremely proud of this team. They have positive... They have positive impacts on the communities within Pinal County, and they're great individuals that really care about making a difference for each and every one of us. So what we want to do is recognize them for their hard work and commitment year-round. So first of all, I want to recognize some of our Co-Compliance Officers in the audience today. We have Frank Smith, Heather Wright, Sonya Martindale, and then we also have Jose Gaxiola and Arthur Johnson, who are not here today. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our new Co-Compliance Manager, David Yeta. So David's going to help me with kind of reading the proclamation and kind of having that go forward. David comes from a law enforcement background. Both Brent and I are very excited to have him onboard, and he's a great addition to the team. He's jumped in feet-first, getting familiar with the county, and really helping to take a look at a range of issues. And also wanted to recognize Paula Molyneux, our former Code Compliance Manager. She's also in the audience. It's a lot of her work and dedication over the years that has really helped to train this, this team, so wanted to recognize each and every one of them. So I'll let you guys take your action, and then we'll have David read the proclamation.
Any discussion? Motion moving forward, then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item five as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. It's passed, let's read that thing.
Members of the Board, Chairman, thank you. By Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclamation, National Code Compliance Month, October 2024, whereas Code Enforcement Officers provide a safety and welfare of the citizens throughout the United States through the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers often have a challenging and demanding role of often do not receive recognition for the job that they are, that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers often have a highly visible and interactive role in the communities while providing quality customer service and excellence to the communities in which they serve. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. And whereas the American Association of Code Enforcement wants to recognize and honor Code Enforcement Officers and professionals all across the United States and bring awareness to the importance of Code Enforcement and to the communities of the United States. Now, therefore, we, Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim that the month of October 2024 is National Code Compliance Month and call upon municipalities and communities to join in recognition and expressing the appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our Code Enforcement Officers proclaim this 30th day of October 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we get a picture?
Do you guys want to join us up front, please?
See if she's going to shut up. Okay. You guys look great. And big smile. Three, two, there we go. One more. Three, two, one. Great, thank you.
She's so well-behaved.
Okay. We're on to item number six, Purchasing Division. Angie, are you here? There you are.
Morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and I have the pleasure of delivering your Purchasing Division report for October 30, 2024. The report includes four contract recommend, four contracts that are recommended for approval. RFP 220226 for specialty legal services, RFP 242929 for property abatement services, ROQ 244927 for the Pinal County Administration Star Building Design Project, RFP 231527 for vehicle and equipment parts repair and services. The Board is requested to approve four contract amendments, which are included in RFP 202725 for court-ordered evaluations, IFB 221126 for landfill disposal services, RFP 222426 for trauma counseling, RFP 231527 for vehicle and equipment parts repair and services. The Board is also requested to approve one competition impracticable form for a purchase over $100,000 for software yearly maintenance. And lastly, there is one cooperative purchase agreement between $100,000 and $250,000 that we are making you aware of. And that's all I have for today. Are there any questions for today's purchasing report?
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. Can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Purchasing Division report as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, item number seven is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time that the agenda item is called. Do we have any by the board members that you'd like to have pulled? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any?
None.
County Manager? Anybody from the public? Mr. Rizellis?
A-N.
A-N, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through B, aye, minus A-N.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, item number seven is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time that the agenda item is called. Do we have any by the board members that you'd like to have pulled? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any?
None.
County Manager? Anybody from the public? Mr. Rizellis?
A-N.
A-N, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through B, aye, minus A-N.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it is unanimous. So, Mr. Rizellis?
Rizellis.
Rizellis? I'm sorry.
Roberto Rizellis, resident of Gold Canyon. Ms. Chairman, I have no objection to this item being considered by, I want to suggest clarifying the, in a paragraph regarding expenses. In a previous contract, a couple of years ago at least, one of the loose items surrounding the contract referred to was referencing compensation and fees. And it posed a, a clouded question over whether any of the sheriff's personnel would be receiving fees. And indeed, turned out that a quote "modest" fee had been paid to the sheriff. I suggest that to remove that cloud, the last sentence in that paragraph three be clarified to remove three words and leave it very precise. May I read the suggested sentence?
Yes.
The section, the suggested sentence would read, "The partners acknowledge and agree that no consideration will be payable by producer to personnel appearing in the series, all of which shall be PCSO's sole responsibility." And producer shall not, and I would remove the following three words, shall, shall not be obligated to, so that it would read, "Producer shall not pay any fee to such personnel." I think that would remove the cloud that was present in a previous reality show contract, that the sheriff or no other personnel should have to be under question as to whether they received fees.
Okay. Matt, you want to speak to that?
I have a question. Chairman, Board, Matthew Thomas, Chief Deputy for the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. So if I'm hearing Mr. Rizellis correctly, adding for addition to the, to the language of this paragraph for approval, stating essentially that our staff will not be compensated directly. And I don't think we have an issue with that. I know we have legal here. Any?
Yeah, and Supervisor Miller has a question regarding that.
Just a question, this might be for the legal department. Wouldn't it have to go back to the producer if we modify the contract at this, at this stage?
Absolutely. Because it's been agreed to by the parties to be approved by this Board of Supervisors, any suggested change in language should be run by the other party to make sure that they're in agreement with that. Now, this sounds pretty, excuse me, pretty innocuous, but we wouldn't need to run that change by then, make sure there's no concerns that they would have. We could not just change it unilaterally, in other words.
Okay. So you were gonna, you were gonna suggest that, right? Supervisor Miller.
Is there a time crunch on this?
There is not a time crunch, so we could, we could definitely work on it and continue, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Does that sound?
November 20. Mistake on that time crunch. So there's not a time crunch, however, we do have some of their staff coming in to start looking, start placing items, that type of stuff. But again, I think is the 20th the fastest we can get on?
When's the next board meeting? The 6th?
So we do have a board meeting on the 6th.
Okay, so.
Which is next week.
I think we should be able to work through the language and everything and get it squared away by then.
That agenda posted on Friday, so I would need to know no later than tomorrow at noon.
Okay. So just for my own self clarification, is there any monetary value of them coming in?
Yes.
And that'll go back into the sheriff's department's budget?
Correct. So there, there is compensation from the, from the producers to the county essentially because we're going to have personnel kind of helping, working, and we, we want to recover that cost. So there's going to be cost recovery, but that doesn't go to any person directly, it goes to the county.
It goes to the county and the sheriff's budget, basically. And some of your redirection program, I know that you guys have been using some of the funds that you've been generating off, like YouTube.
Yes, sir.
Has been going back into those type of programs.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay. Should I get motion moving forward, then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue item A-N on the consent agenda. Continue it to the 6th of November.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. I've got a request to just take a short recess. So we're going to recess for just a few minutes, 10 minutes. We're going to, now, we're going to recess, I probably should have done that before, but we're going to recess our normal Board of Supervisor meeting, and we're going to open up our Pinal County Flood Control District Board meeting. What we have here is, they're all consent items. So all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member or county manager or member of the public objects at the time that it's presented. And so is there any members of the board that would like to have any of these items pulled? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you still on?
Yes, no objection.
Okay. Matt County Manager? Anybody from the public? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, A through C, for the Pinal County Flood Control District Board of Directors meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll now close the Pinal County Flood Control District Board of Directors, and we now open the meeting of the Pinal County Library District Board of Directors. Looking at the agenda, it is all consent items. So any member of the board, or county manager, or anybody from the public that wishes to have any of these items pulled, please so indicate. Anybody from the board? Manager, public? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Pinal County Library District Board of Directors Agenda, items A through D as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, just for clarification for the, the public and for the board to be aware, items B and C, the consent items on there, those are done on behalf of the Library District. Those will be coming back at another meeting for the Board of Supervisor side to approve that also. So I didn't want you to be confused and ask, didn't we just approve this last meeting? You approved the one half of the agreement for the special district, and now you're going to approve it in the next meeting for the county itself. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'd have been one of them that would have been gone, wait a minute. Okay.
Good memory.
Yeah, dealing with one of our twins. Wait, did you just? Okay, so we're going to close the Pinal County Library District, and we'll open now the Pinal County Public Health Department District. Looking at it, let's see, there's quite a few items on here. Is there anybody, so same thing here, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote. Any individual, or any board member, or county manager, or anybody from the public wishes to have any of these items pulled? Seeing that there's none, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, A through I, on the Pinal County Public Health Services District meeting.
Okay, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. We're going to reconvene, we'll close the Pinal County Public Health District, and we will now reconvene our regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Item number 11. Item number 11. Call to the public. I'd like to read this before we get into this. Several weeks ago, we held a work session on the call to public portion of our meetings to discuss various options that we might have. I'd like to remind everyone that call to the public is optional. It is at the board's discretion. Since that meeting, I understand that several of our district offices received comments that we should not allow the public to use that time for their own agenda, or in my words, grandstanding, about things or events this board has no jurisdiction or say over. When that occurs, it takes away from this board's ability to hold efficient and orderly meetings, and at times it appears the only purpose is to incite public discord on some level. With that in mind, as chairman, I do have the ability to cut you off. That is not something that I really wish to do, has been indicated in times past. I don't think any board member that is sat at this chair has had that intent to do that. So with that in mind, I ask if you wish to speak at call to the public, please limit your comments to matters this board has authority over. Otherwise, you're distracting from the board's actual business at hand. If it appears you're merely grandstanding about items not germane to this board, I may have to stop you unless there is an effort to tie your speech to matters at hand that this board has authority over. That way, when you come to the board in the future, or that this board has supervision over. Understand this, I'm not trying to control the content of your speech. I'm trying to keep this meeting moving in an orderly, efficient manner on topics germane to this board for those in attendance. My other option is to suspend call to the public until the next chairman, again, until the next chairman sits in this position. So keep that in mind when you come up, please. I would also like personally to apologize for some of the actions in our last board meeting that I took, to the public as a whole. I received several emails in regards to that as well, and with some criticism, and it was well taken. After sitting down and looking at it and discussing matters with my wife, I realized that a lot of the criticism, things that was pointed towards me, was absolutely correct. So I apologize to the public as a whole. So with that being said, if I could ask the question, I have, we have several items that have public, it's a public hearing that's on our agenda for today. So if I have in my hand eight, let me see, two, four, six actually, call to the public cards, is there anybody else here that is wishing to speak at this time if you're not here for a particular agenda item other than call to the public? How many do I have here? If you raise your hand for call to the public. So Arlen, you've already filled yours out. You are, sir?
Scott Thibodeau.
Did you fill out a card yet? Okay. Mr. Ravelis? Okay. Mr. Ellison, I have yours.
I have mine.
You have a card too. Okay. That's, okay. So we'll go ahead and give them three minutes each, okay? We were thinking that there was going to be a whole lot that wanted to do the call to the public, but because we have these other public hearing components to the items at hand, we'll allow you to speak of those as well, okay? The individuals that I don't have cards for. Okay. So first call to the public is Barry McCain.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Board Supervisors, Staffs, and Friends. I'm Barry McCain from the city of Maricopa. I've been an activist at Arizona Issues and Arizona State Legislature since 2005. I'm going to, I'd rather to have brought this to you, had you look at it first, but my main concern is this. I refer you to Chairman Goodman. I know personally I care a lot about you, but I feel that we should look at First Samuel 15, 13 through 35. Now, I personally was a Democrat all my life, and now I'm a Republican, and I'm happy being a Republican. I found some good Republicans. But I definitely was raised as a Democrat. I knew when I filed to run for county supervisor, there was going to be trouble. You see, I resigned as Pinal County Democrat Secretary because Henry Wade was gaslighting me repeatedly, and he's doing it to this day, yet it's illegal. So I ran because I should run for county supervisor. But I think when it comes to elections, we shouldn't have people trying to control other people, and I can't have, I can't have hit the middle if I don't have a left and a right way of looking at things. This election is, I've seen people get hurt over this because people want to control other people. In elections, I don't think that should be done. So when I filed, like I said, I knew there was going to be trouble. First thing happened was Rich Fattello, he asked me not to protect him.
Mr. McCain, if you'll just keep it to the point and...
Okay. So I think as far as our candidates, we need to have us work together though to save our country because it takes at least two different sides. And we're not getting that. I've got people pointing the finger at each other, and I just think that's not what America's about. And I definitely will defend you on what your actions, anyway, I feel you had every right to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Scott Thibodeau?
Thibodeau.
Thibodeau.
Morning, yeah, Thibodeau. Morning, Board. My name is Scott Thibodeau from Santan Valley. I'm here to see if I can get you guys to put policies and procedures in place to accept domestic partnerships pursuant to state legislation HB 2353, just like our sister counties, Maricopa, Pima, to name a few.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was that number again? Did you write that down, Steve?
2353.
2353?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I am Major Nancy Harte, retired United States Air Force. I hope you won't censor me for what I'm about to say. I come in good faith. I am a resident of Florence, a retired women's health nurse practitioner, a Democratic candidate for the House of Arizona, Arizona House of Representatives, and a survivor of childhood home with mentally ill and abusive father. I'm here today to state my great concern about our future president, who is the Commander in Chief of the United States Armed Forces. Now, I know you don't have control of that, but I'm going to get to an issue on the community if you will bear with me. As an Air Force officer...
Please bring it back to that too, okay?
I certainly will. As an Air Force officer, I took an oath to quote, "Support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic." The presidential oath also says, quote, "Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States. Neither is loyalty to a person, it is to the Constitution." Donald Trump specifically stated the Constitution can be, quote, "disregarded." I'm going on with this. I think you should, I listened to the last board meeting, and you and others got to spew a lot of things that I found very offensive.
And you may have already responded to me in regards to that.
I have not. I have not.
Okay. Well, but that's okay. This is not the, this is not the place, and if you feel like you want to criticize me or anything of the sort of that nature, we can meet later.
No, but I'd like to go on. Let me skip to the paragraph, okay? Because of some of Trump's comments about grabbing people by the genitals and so forth, when I'm asked by parents if I would support their child enlisting in the military, my reply has always been the same. "I only advise military enlistment if we have a president who values the lives of troops and doesn't consider them numbers and indiscriminately send them to harm's way. Imagine how female troops would feel knowing their commander in chief is okay with sexual assault." I was raised in an abusive home.
Listen, this is exactly what we're talking about here.
Yeah. But you let people in the past spew, and you spewed it yourself, and now you're censoring me, which I find absolutely abhorrent. Thank you.
Next one is Jean Stockton.
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, and Mishka. My name is Jean Stockton. I live in Johnson Ranch, 29709 North Gecko Trail. Number one, Santan Valley, Florence, Hunt Highway is sure busy. Twenty-four dump trucks and seventeen, or seven concrete trucks just from Copper Basin to Florence this morning. I was amazed. Just want to remind you that I'm still waiting for a meeting to be set up to review the sanctuary development on Hunt Highway. That hasn't been set up. I would like to request, if you have any influence over the sheriff's office, that you work with them so that the sheriff's office understands the difference between a state law, a county law, and an HOA CCNR. We had two vehicles parked on the sidewalk that was completely blocking the sidewalk. I called the deputies, I called the sheriffs, they came out. They told the people to move, they moved one vehicle, and then the other vehicle still blocked the sidewalk. I called the deputy back and said, "You've been out here." They sent me a little text message to say, "How did I like their service?" And I said, "You've been out here," and they moved one of the vehicles, but they're still blocking the sidewalk. And he said, "Well, I'm not coming back out there and bothering them again," even though people could not get down the sidewalk with walking, let alone with a wheelchair or bicycle. And I said, "Well, I want you to ticket them because if you came out, they still parked on the sidewalk, and there's a state law preventing that." So I'd like to encourage you, if you can influence the sheriff's department, to become trained on the difference between an HOA CCNR and a state or county law. Please and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I was also at the meeting October the 4th. I don't think this should be a political referendum for anybody. I don't think the Republicans should get out and spout out for their party or the Democrats. I was dismayed at one of the audience members becoming very unruly and disrespectful. I did not feel safe with his unbecoming attitude and actions. I left the meeting early because I didn't think that he deserved the respect of my attention after he disrespected everybody in this building. I hope guideline number five is adhered to and enforced. Happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have George Ellison.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, George Ellison, Gold Canyon. Based on the chair's earlier comments, I think I'm not going to say anything because what I was going to say dealt with party platforms. And even though I personally think the party platforms of both the Democrats and the Republicans affects everything down to the county level, and federal decisions affect you at a county level, I respect your rights and I respect your decisions. So I have nothing to say on that, and I may or may not be back in the future. What I do want to say is thank you for what you've all done in the past. I think you did a great service for the county, and frankly, for the United States. This is one of the few places that people can speak freely, especially Republicans. We are censored everywhere we go. You didn't censor us. And I'm not suggesting you're censoring us now either. You made a decision, I understand your decision, but I want to thank you for what you did in the past. I hope I see you again in the future. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. Okay.
Good morning. I'm Arlen Trout from Gold Canyon. I'm producing a documentary about the abuse of discretion and misuse of public resources in a conspiracy to catch and kill scandals. Sheriff Lamb, Kent Faulkner, and the board have exploited civil and administrative procedures to hide criminal tactics of local land developers, public officials, and the Republican Party. You have used tax dollars to hire fixated attorneys to mischaracterize criminal conduct, delay, and obstruct investigations that evade accountability. Jeff Sertie was aware of the Trout versus Russell court rulings in September of '23. Sertie is a shot caller for pro-Trump extremists that took control of Pinal County government in 2016. Political ambition for Sheriff Lamb to win a tie-breaking seat in the U.S. Senate created a high-stakes catch-and-kill game. This strategy mirrors Donald Trump's 34 felony convictions. His defense, he didn't want to embarrass his wife and kids, but his real crime was deception to avoid political donors and voter fallout to maintain power.
Mr. Trout, stay on topic.
Now, this board has used...
Well, we have control over.
Okay, that's over. This board has used this power to obstruct transparency, obstruct justice with taxpayer money. You've account, you're accountants, and you have a responsibility to account for your expenditures of public resources. Pinal County is facing contempt charges in court, and the Attorney General is investigating you. You are a perfect example for this documentary. I'm demanding Jeff Sertie, Mike Goodman explain and account for all of the resources Pinal County has spent on the Trout matters to the public today and before this public apology from Sheriff Lamb because he's accusing me of being a liar before he leaves office. I have not lied, I'm a victim. Respectfully submitted, Arlen Trout. I'm sorry I'm having trouble with this. I'm a professional musician, but this kind of stuff really throws me. I would like for you guys to come and listen to me play guitar instead of have to do this over and over again.
Thank you, Arlen. I appreciate it. Thank you. Was there any others that wish to speak? As long as you stay on topic. I know your name was called out, so just stay away from that, please.
Rich Fattello, Maricopa resident. I do want to thank you for your change of rules. I appreciate that. Although my name was called out, I feel I should get the opportunity, but I will respect the board.
Please.
And I hope the gentleman who consistently comes up with this stuff will stop. Thank you for giving me a couple seconds to tell you that, and I appreciate you.
Thanks, Rich. Is there, Mr. Ravelis, did you, anybody else? I think you had your hand up earlier.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, I'm dismayed. I agree with Mr. Ellison of Gold Canyon. This public podium should represent the basic values of our Constitution. Freedom of speech is a basic right. I had prepared a three-minute rebuttal to what occurred on October 2, but it's obvious that you were intent on shutting down... that you were intent on shutting down any discussion that is considered not germane. Everything that happens within this Board of Supervisors is germane under the federal You yourself have been a person who I have been proud of for sponsoring help from the federal government, the CHIPS and Science Act, the Infrastructure Act, all of which helped us overcome the horrible results of a pandemic that went uncontrolled at the behest of an elected official of this county. Germane? Arizona receives a return on each federal dollar that we pay. We receive a federal resource, a return on investment of $2.40. I do not accept your apology, Mr. Chairman, because I have sound, basic disagreement with anybody that shuts down our First Amendment right.
That's your right. Is there any others that would like to speak? With that being said, let's move on then. We'll close the call to the public, and we'll move on to item number...
Mike, are we, when we get called out, are we no longer responding either?
Yes, yes, you can. Did you, would you like to say something, Jeff?
Yeah, I've got demanding that I explain and account for resources of Pinnell County, and you also. And Kent Volkmer has left. Chris, you're still here. As far as I know, the county has spent nothing on the legal because when there's a conflict and it gets handed to another jurisdiction, it is courtesy of different boards and bodies to help each other out, non-grata. Is that correct, Chris?
That is correct.
So we have spent no resources on anything having to do with this Trout matter?
I'd have to go ahead and take a look at that sort.
Yeah, but that's the way I understand it. So there's nothing to respond to.
Yeah, if you could check into that, that'd be great, just to make sure, double-check. Okay. Okay, I didn't notice anybody else other than you and I that was called out, so we're going to move on to item number 12. This is a public hearing and discussion approval/disapproval of resolution number 2024-SUP-012-24, a resolution approving case SUP-0224. This is a special use permit request by the American Tower Management. Those that are going to be presented, presenting, this is in District 5. Is Monica here? Oh, there you are. You snuck up on me.
Good morning, all. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the audience. I am Monica Smriti, planner. I am presenting the case SUP-01224. This is for a wireless communication facility located in Kearney. So American Tower Management LLC is seeking approval for a new special use permit to operate an existing wireless communication facility with an expired SUP. The wireless tower provides T-Mobile and Verizon wireless internet and mobile communication services to the communities of Kearney, Hayden, Winkleman, and the surrounding areas and traffic along State Routes 177 and 77. The facility is located at the southwest corner of Camino Rio Road and Tristan Road within close proximity to town of Kearney in an unincorporated area of Pinnell County. And it is situated on the portion of the parcel 301250040, and the current zoning of the parcel is general rural, which does not allow wireless communication facility. It is only allowed with the special use permit. The map here shows the general location of the facility and the surrounding zoning And the aerials are showing the surrounding context as well as the current condition of the wireless communication facility. That's marked by the red dot here on the map. And the site is accessible by, as I mentioned earlier, State Route 177 and 77 through a county-owned drive that's called North Camino Rio Drive. And then the site photo here on this slide shows a private easement that is used for access to the wireless communication facility. And this photo shows the current condition of the facility. And here you can see the surrounding landscape looking northwest from the wireless tower. And this photo is looking onto the site, the rest of the portion of the parcel that is 40 acres. And the notification area of 600-foot boundary. The zoning in close-up in here on this map. And then you can see here on this slide, the site plan. The pink box shows the location of the wireless communication facility. And the parcel has other two buildings. Both are residential, and they are used for second home by the owners. The tower is 188 feet tall. And on this slide, you can see some of the specs as well as... So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a favorable approval with 14 stipulations. And some of the items of consideration for the board is that the facility was approved with special use permit SUP-013-00, which expired on October 25, 2015, and that's the reason they have applied for the renewal of their SUP with a separate case number. If this SUP gets approved, the coverage will be maintained significantly for the area. They have submitted all the necessary documentation. County staff have not identified any adverse impact on the neighborhood or the surrounding landscape, as well as we have not received any opposition from the neighbors. Should the board find that this special use permit request is necessary and appropriate for this location and time, the next step would be to approve case SUP-01224 along with the 14 stipulations. And if the board does not find the proposed special use permit appropriate for the zoning district, it should deny case SUP-01224. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay. There is a public hearing to this particular item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close. Is there people in the overflow room?
Let us confirm just a second, Chairman.
So you're still closing it? I mean, you're waiting to see?
We'll wait, see, and then I'll close it.
Is somebody in there?
Yeah, if somebody's in there and wants to...
There's about 10 empty seats, too, if anybody wants to take one.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Anybody that's in the overflow. Okay. All right, well, I'll close the public hearing aspect to this. Do I have a motion moving forward then?
Can we comment?
Yes, please.
So, yeah, we've had a lot of contentious cell towers in the last year, but this is a perfect example of how they should work. It's remote, the community needs it, no harm, and we actually need more because there are still some dead spots in that area. So hopefully, we continue to keep providing as much cell service and Wi-Fi as we can to these remote areas.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment? Supervisor Sertie, you want to lead the pack on this one then, on a motion?
Chairman.
Oh.
I'm sorry, before we take that action, we do have the applicant in attendance, and he would like to speak.
Oh, he would like to speak, okay. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Yes, John Merritt for American Towers. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. We appreciate your review and consideration of this renewal. It is an existing tower. It's been there over 20 years. As Supervisor Sertie correctly stated, it's quite remote. It's not even visible from any public highway. It's on a 40-acre parcel and provides wireless and internet service for Verizon and T-Mobile subscribers, covers almost entirely the southeastern corner of District 5, and it's unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. So other than that, we appreciate your positive consideration and would be delighted to take any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 was presented.
Second.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Sorry. With 14 stipulations.
With 14 stipulations? You got that added?
Still second.
Okay.
Still second.
Is that still an "I," Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes, it's an "I."
Okay. Any, the others, "I"?
"I."
"I."
Okay, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'm, item number 13. This is a public hearing and discussion approval/disapproval of resolution number 2024-PZPA-00524. This is a major comprehensive plan amendment proposal requested by 310 SM8ME, my word, LLC. And we have Sangita.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board members. I'm going to give you an overview of the...
Give your name.
Sangita Dioker, Senior Planner with Planning Division. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We can begin with the presentation, and then I'll... So just to give you an overview of the major comprehensive plan amendments for 2024, we have received a couple of additional comments that I'm going to pass out with, to the Board members, to Natasha. And these are for, they are in opposition, some of them are in favor, and these were received after the comp plan amendments were uploaded on Elvis. So just to give you an overview of this year's major comprehensive plan amendments, we had in the initial stages, eight of them that were received. The schedule that is being shared out here, we are at the last portion, which is the final public hearing at the board to approve or deny or continue with the requests. This is a yearly process, and they are processed beginning May, that we have the end deadline for receiving these. And we have gone through the two major public hearings, which is the Citizens Advisory Committee Meeting, September 5, and September 25, which we had the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And here we are at the last stage at the board. So these were the proposals that were received. At this point, we have four of them, which are solar projects. We have one thermal gas-fired power generation facility. We have one as an RV storage and one as a data center. And to begin with, we have the first one that's going to be presented by Monica Smriti, and here you are, Monica.
Hello again, and good morning again. This is Monica Smriti, planner. I am presenting the case PZ-PA-005-24, Overtown Solar and Battery Storage Project. It is a major comprehensive plan request by the applicant SWCA Environmental Consultants on behalf of the owner 310 SM8ME LLC. The proposal is to redesignate approximately 1,227.5 acres of land located in San Manuel, Arizona, from moderate low-density residential to green energy production for 145-megawatt photovoltaic solar power plant with battery storage, along with 115-kilowatt generation type transmission line to be connected to the regional grid at the existing San Manuel substation. The proposed site is located east of South Veterans Memorial Boulevard and south of South Republic Road in the vicinity of San Manuel. The general location of the proposed site, you can see here on this county map marked by the red star. The current comprehensive plan land use designation for the proposed site is moderate low-density residential. A solar facility with battery storage is not allowed with this planned use designation. That is why the applicant is proposing to redesignate the land use to green energy On this map here, you can see the general location of the project site with respect to San Pedro River and the San Manuel Town Site, a historic town site that was established in 1954. The blue color here on this map shows the formal industrial portion of the land that is designated as brownfield. That's where the ore processing was taking place back in 1955 and 2003. And there is an existing substation located towards the northern portion of the site that is marked by a triangular shape here. And the transmissions lines are connected to the regional grid through that substation here on this map. So before we get into the further description of the proposed site, we would like to discuss the historical context of the San Manuel Town Site. It was established in 1954 to cater to the operations of San Manuel Copper Mine. This was built for, to accommodate 8,000 people back then. The land uses includes, in this community, residential, commercial, and institutional. This photograph here shows the historical image of the San Manuel Town Site and the ore processing site, both the community as well as the copper mine working together in resonance. And another historical photo here shows the ore milling operations back from 1956. And now we can see the current condition of the San Manuel Town Site. As I mentioned before, the mine stopped operations in 2003. The image here shows how the residents of the San Manuel Town Site are still celebrating their mining heritage and calling themselves, and the town, as the home of the miners. This is another image of the San Manuel Town Site looking towards the stunning view of the mountains in backdrop. Currently, the overall population of San Manuel is 3,532 per the latest census. And if we, across the road, if we start moving towards the proposed site, this is where the access road to the proposed site starts. It is currently fenced, and general public is not allowed inside the project area. So this picture has been taken from the Veteran Boulevard Road. And then this image shows the landscape of the... And then this image shows the, the landscape of the proposed site as well as the surrounding context. The, as I mentioned before, the, the proposed site is nestled in the foothills of the Gaiaro Mountains, and it overlooks the stunning views of road peaks and grassy peak with the San Pedro River flowing further east. And if we were to draw a cross-section from San Manuel Town Site towards the San Pedro River, this is the elevation that we, we are getting. There is approximately 280 feet elevation difference between the, the Veteran Boulevard and the eastern edge of the proposed site. So if a solar plant is established, this will not contribute towards the blockage of the views of the mountains from the road. And the site is part of the big wash San Pedro River watershed with miner washes flowing from southwest to northeast, including the San Pedro Big Wash. We, we expanded our public participation radius from mandatory 600 feet to 2 miles so that we could include each and every resident of San Manuel to be part of this public hearing and for them to understand what is being proposed currently at 1,200, approximately 1,200 acres of land within the close proximity of their neighborhood. And to date, staff have received 11 oppositions and one letter for conditional support and 24 letters of full support. The, currently, the presentation is only showing 9, 1, and 17 because we received those letters after this presentation was uploaded. And we have distributed the, the latest letters to, to the Board. So the opposition team is concerned about the benefits for the local community that this project is going to bring in. They have shown concern regarding energy insecurity within the local community, concerns about who will benefit from the solar energy, whether it will be the local community, the state of Arizona, or state of California. They, they have concern about the potential fire hazards and environmental impacts on existing flora and fauna, including Arizona desert tortoises and gila monsters. They, they showed concern regarding the contamination mitigation from previous ore processing and potential waste disposal concerns related to the solar farm. They, the community was wondering about other allowable uses within the current land use zoning designation, that is MLDR. The support team is mostly about mentioning that the project is well suitable for, for, for a solar facility. They, they have been advocating for private property rights of the developer. The support party mentions that the project will be beneficial for community development, enhancing the resiliency, resiliency of the electric grid and providing tax and economic benefits to Pinale County and local communities. One of the letter mentioned that the project is suitable contingent upon the county and developers initiating the establishment of a very large, active, well-trained and maintained fire department nearby that is maintained by the developers and not funded through the tax money of the residents. The Citizen Advisory Committee has recommended approval with a vote of 8 to 7. The committee addressed the following issues and concerns: the in-place capping status of the ore processing area, its brownfield status, and fire safety for the proposed solar facility; the health and well-being of the residents of San Manuel Town Site, including both short-term and long-term job opportunities available to them; reevaluation of the comprehensive plan designation after the project's decommissioning. Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to, and they recommended approval for the project. The commission addressed the following issues and concern: the status of the environmental impact assessment and geotechnical assessment during the further permitting process; impact on the property value and short and long-term job opportunities available to the community. Items for consideration for the Board, staff have found that the transformation of a portion of a historically industrial site into a sustainable green energy project represents a significant upgrade from its existing land use to the future land use. Pinale County staff have the ability to regulate and address environmental concerns during the site development phases of the project. We, we could, because this is a land, land use discussion, so we, we cannot get into the details of environmental impact or other site development-related issues that have arise at this moment. However, during the rezoning and site planning stage, we can review and decide whether the site is suitable for the proposed facility or not in terms of the structural stability, fire safety, or environmental impact. However, the staff finds that it is developers responsible for addressing the community concerns at this moment, along with exercising their private property rights. We have found that the project aligns broadly, broadly with the visions of Pinale County Comprehensive Plan. However, there are three areas, the three visions, like the sense of community, the economic sustainability, and happy, healthy residents. These three visions that need, the project need to be compliant with and that should be addressed by the developers. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Supervisors, Kavanaugh, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Is the applicant here? They're here, I would imagine, right? Do you, do you have anything you would like to add before I open up public comment?
Yes, we both.
Or public. Okay.
Are we allowed to give that now?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and do it.
Before you start your presentation, Mr. Chair, is it possible to turn the heat up in here a little bit? It is like sitting in an igloo up here.
We're Arizona boys.
I don't think we need the heat up, just less stacy.
Okay. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Kevin Johnson. I'm a Director of Development with Avantis on behalf of the owner of the project. Oortown is unlike any other solar project that's been proposed in Pinale County. It's not on virgin desert, it's not on farmland. We're proposing to take an old mining facility, an already disturbed site, and breathe new life into it. You'll hear several key messages throughout my presentation today, and I'd like to highlight them at the outset. This is private property, it's not state or federal land. The landowner is BHP, a major mining company. And BHP wants to exercise their private property rights to develop this portion of their land for solar. The project site itself is ideal for solar development and clearly not ideal for residential, as you heard from, from Monica. And the project won't significantly diminish the views of the vistas, the mountains in the distance. In fact, for many places in town, we expect that very little of the project will be seen. There is support from the local community, as you heard again from Monica. We have 24 letters of support from the local business community, from local residents, and from the San Manuel Fire Department. And in our three community meetings, we heard very positive feedback from any of the residents as well. The county and the state are growing rapidly, as you well know, and we need new sources of power generation to meet that growth. This project will help power that growth. And lastly, this project will bring significant tax dollars to Pinale County and to the local Do I drive the slides? All right, awesome, thank you. So I've already introduced myself, Kevin Johnson, I'm the development lead for the project. Here with me today, Jennifer Jackson, our permitting lead. We have our environmental consultant, Megan Austin, with SWCA as well, and representatives from BHP, the landowner, are here too, to answer questions and to provide a few comments as well. A little background on our company, we're well-established in the solar industry, been around since 2009. We've developed over 2,000 megawatts of solar projects that are operating, and we're very proud of multiple record-breaking achievements in the industry. I won't go through them, but they're on the slide here. And in addition to this strong track record, we have one of the largest development portfolios of solar and storage projects in the Western US. When built out, these, over 80 projects would serve over 20 million people in the Western US. And we've been active in Arizona for many years now. We have several other projects in addition to Oortown. We're proud to be developing in Arizona for many years now. I'll spend a minute or two on background of the project, though you've heard most of this already. Located in District 4, Pinale County, near the town of San Manuel, 145 megawatts of solar and battery storage. We're on approximately 1,200 acres of previously disturbed private land owned by BHP Copper. A portion of the proposed project area was used for ore processing. I do want to be clear, this area was not actually mined, nor will the solar project be located on top of the, the tailings storage facility. It's between the, the highway and the tailings. The project does sit behind an existing security fence, and through our less-than-one-mile-long generation tie line, we would interconnect to the existing San Manuel, the APS San Manuel Substation, which is pictured at the bottom of this slide. Today, we're just talking about the first step of the county permitting process, the major comprehensive plan amendment. We're proposing to amend the land use designation from moderate-low-density residential to green energy production. BHP themselves have acknowledged that residential is not a use that they would want to develop this site for, not very realistic considering the historical use of the site, and therefore proposing solar as a better use and a compatible use for a previously disturbed site. I've also listed the process dates here, and as Monica mentioned in her presentation, both the CAC and the PNZ Commission recommended approval of this MCPA. And, you know, if, if approved today, we would look forward to the future PAD and zone change process next year. But, you know, today is not approval to construct the project, simply the first step of the process. I mentioned at the top that the project site is ideal for solar development. Few of the reasons why, from a site selection standpoint, again, it's private land, previously disturbed, it's near the existing APS substation and transmission lines, the landowner is seeking to repurpose the site for solar. And while the, the site slopes, there is low topographic variability across it, so from a buildability standpoint, we would not need extensive grading for this project. We've also done a number of due diligence studies to suggest that there are no significant issues from an environmental standpoint. Got those listed on the right-hand side of the screen, there's no threatened and endangered species, wildlife movement corridors, sensitive or unique habitat, perennial surface waters, wet, wetlands, floodplain hazards. We'll actually avoid the drainages, the primary drainages throughout the site with our design. The solar arrays will sit outside of those. We're not sited on the mine tailings, as I mentioned, and we're about three miles between the San Pedro River and the project site. Sitting between those two things is the tailings storage facility. There aren't any riparian communities within the project area, no bat roost sites, no western burrowing owls, burrows, or suitable nesting or perching habitat for golden eagles. And we did a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, have not identified any recognized environmental conditions. From a due diligence standpoint and from a site selection standpoint, we see this as an ideal site for solar development. That being said, we recognize that the project site sits very close to the town of San Manuel. We did a number of photo simulations to address one of the primary questions we've received, which is how much of the project will be visible from town? On the left-hand side, you can see a before image. On the right-hand side, this is the simulated after image of the project. This is from the San Manuel Community Center, a location where I think a lot of people in town could recognize. It's obviously difficult to discern the difference between the two images here. That is essentially because the existing infrastructure blocks the view down to the project area. Here, on these color overlays, you'll see a few of these, the pink represents the actual modeled structures of the project. But again, they're not very visible in the simulated image, given the existing infrastructure and topography of the area.
Just to be clear here, the, because when you see the pink, people say, what is that? So the pink vertical line, say on that tan house there and on the greenhouse carport, or not, the carport, that lattice, I mean, that's the height of the towers would be down in the, in the development.
That's right.
So obviously, the houses are blocking all that view. And the, and the heavy pink line on the right, is that the solar field?
That's correct.
At the southern end, where it comes up closest to the highway, or, well, southern, eastern, where?
That would be, if I can go to a map here...
That there, so like above the RIA?
Right in this area is what you would be seeing on the right-hand side of that simulation in pink. And the towers you referenced, Supervisor, yes, those would be along this green line.
Okay.
So if you're further down from where the Community Center is, down toward Memorial Highway or Boulevard, you would see those panels? Or would they be behind vegetation, behind the fence, lower?
In, in general, I think they would be behind the fence and lower, sitting down. We have some other visual simulations I'll go through that will hopefully demonstrate that.
Okay, thank you.
And we can address further questions at that point. So the next one here, this is from Avenue G, coming down the hill from town. I think Supervisor McClure, this responds in part to your question.
Yes.
Much less obstructed view, I'll say it that way. This is looking northeast toward the proposed project area. It's, it is a little bit difficult to discern based on the screen here, but our simulation, the color overlay on the next slide, will show those towers, the fence, and the start of the panels over here off to the right. The next simulation is essentially from the corner where the gas station in town is located. So this is the intersection of McNabb and Veterans Memorial Boulevard Highway. This is looking southeast toward the proposed project area. In this particular instance, based on the topography and existing vegetation, again, very difficult to discern where the project is modeled in the after image. We have a overlay here. So this pink line here, that represents a lot of the solar arrays, and you can see a, a few of the Gentai structures. a few of the gentai structures as well. And lastly, we have a simulation from, this is approximately two miles south of the gas station, down on Veterans Memorial Boulevard. This is looking northeast toward the proposed project area, and you can see on the right-hand side, there are panels out here in the distance. These are located approximately 200 feet from the road. And based on the elevation of the mountains in the distance, it's approximately twice the elevation of the town, we believe that, you know, the existing viewshed of those mountains in the distance is not significantly impacted by having the solar arrays sit below the horizon.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We, of course, want to be a good neighbor, and as I mentioned at the top, we've received a number of support letters from the local business community, you know, a handful of local businesses, local residents as well. I'd like to read a couple of those comments. Wonderful project idea for otherwise unusable land. That's from a San Manuel resident. I am in favor of this project, a perfect use of the land, another San Manuel resident. And we've had several discussions with the San Manuel Fire Department, they're in support of the project, and they've provided a letter of support as well. Of course, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that everyone that we've interacted with in our community meetings is supportive of the project. I would expect you will hear from people today that are not in support of the project. But certainly, we have seen that there is support for the project with the local community, these business members, local residents. We've had three separate community meetings, had an opportunity to provide information about the project, to answer questions, and to have conversations with local residents. From our perspective, all three of these meetings were very positive, and we really appreciated the opportunity to engage with the attendees. I have on the slide here, you know, we strive to actively contribute to the communities where our projects are located. I have a few examples of what we've done in other communities, but the key message here for us is that we continue to want to work with the community, understand their local needs, their local values, their local wants, to see how we can be a contributing member of the community with the solar project. And lastly, I'd like to touch on some of the project benefits. So the project would be a large, stable source of tax revenue for Penal County and local districts. I have the districts listed there on the right-hand side of the screen. One of the, or two of the notable districts are Mammoth-San Manuel Unified School District and the Fire District as well. We project up to $70 million in local tax, state and local tax revenues to fund essential public services over the 35-year life of the project. Additionally, the project would enhance resiliency of the local grid, provide, as I mentioned at the top, electricity to meet Arizona and Penal County's growing demand. Once constructed, solar projects produce very little daily traffic. The project would create short and long-term job opportunities, and of course, local economic activity during construction. And if you compare a solar project to a commercial or residential development of a similar scale, they require much less water to operate. With that, if I could ask John Baker from BHP to provide a few comments, and then we'd like to address any questions as well.
Good afternoon. Here to represent BHP, answer any questions, and also show our support for Avantis, explain that we went through a very rigorous process in order to even find Avantis and select them. We had a separate contractor that brought us into contact with them, as well as many other companies, and they have met all of our guidelines, and we went into a lease with them. That lease has given us a really good head start on making sure we had reclamation accounted for, and numerous other entities or things like local sourcing, ethical sourcing of the plant and stuff like that. So we wanted to just show that our, we wanted to support this. This is something that we thought of as a no-win, I mean, a win-win, because it helps the community, as well as it helps us do something with the repurpose of this land. As with anything enclosure, the reason why I even joined this side of BHP was to learn how to remediate, repurpose, and change the land use of the land, and we have felt that this is one of the best possible ways to change this land use, specifically this land. It's a lower elevation, as well as it gives us something to do with the land. Otherwise, right now, with that Essex W area, the Brownfield area, there was not much else we could do with this land. With that said, I'm here to answer any questions around the land. I represent BHP's land throughout all of US, which is about 18 different sites. So if this is successful, this is something that we could possibly cannonball into other areas.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, in one of the letters that I was skimming over, it was talking about, you know, contamination of grounds, it talked about a bunch of things, flora and fauna issues, and I'm looking, you know, like migration patterns. Well, there's already a fence around it, and so, you know, if those poor animals can't figure out how to get around a post, you know, they got bigger problems. But, so that's kind of non-issue for me, but the contamination of the grounds were interesting. It's like, so disposal of old dirt. So how contaminated is that ground? And what, with the very little grading that you suggest that you're going to do, what do you do with the dirt that is possibly contaminated? Where does that go?
So, great question. I don't know exactly what their operations, how they're going to do that, and how we're going to be involved in that, but we will be involved in that. We do know that that land has gotten all of its approvals from the state as part of closure and met the minimum requirements, and we always try to go above the minimum requirements for any type of closure of our land. So yes, it is still a concern, obviously, you know, being that it was a smelter area, Essex W area, but we will definitely have certain guidelines around that and work hand-in-hand with the operator.
Okay. I mean, it was close on CAC eight to seven, and the PNZ five to two, a little further apart, but it wasn't like it was overwhelmingly approved, as everybody wants to say, so I'm just kind of going there. I mean, I agree with your property rights, it's your property, you can do what you want to do, but is it the best use for the area, you know? But what other, hmm, what are the things were looked at? I mean, were other companies asked to come in, commercialization of the property?
So, yes.
Yes, okay.
Over the last couple of years, we actually.
Manufacturing, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so over the last couple of years, we actually were in the running with Amazon, as well as Microsoft Data Center. Obviously, the location of it was not ideal for them. You know, being that far away from a major hub, being Phoenix or Tucson, just was not appetizing for them, right? And this was like the next best thing that we could come up with. Unfortunately, with the tailings there also, we can't have much activity down there with people, because that brings a certain risk as well, right? If that tailings is supposed to flow to the east, but as we know, models aren't always 100% correct. The good thing is that it is in that little valley, so if it did flow and went like that, everybody would be safe, except for those solar powers.
Okay, because people talk about wanting to bring jobs to the area, but, you know, the employability of the area is limited, I would say.
Correct. Well, that, and, you know, this site specifically with the solar, obviously, wouldn't have a lot of jobs. I'll be honest with you.
Two or three.
I mean, it is, I agree, and unfortunately, it wouldn't be a lot of jobs, but it would be a lot of jobs short-term for the construction, it just wouldn't be long-term.
Well, the construction, though, most of those people come, many of them come from out of state. There are locals, because I know some people that are local that do that, but not.
Yeah, I know a lot of them from the Oracle area, actually, that come up and work in that area doing construction, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any others? Supervisor Miller.
Just real quick, to the, to the construction of the site, there would be required dust permits and all that application that is so heavily regulated, I mean, you'll be required to mitigate any disturbance of any type. Am I correct in that?
That's what I'm assuming. Everything we've ever done out there would have to have those dust permits and all the necessary county permits that are needed, as well as state permits. Obviously, this is just the first step to get the comprehensive plan.
Understand, yeah.
And then we have the planning side, right? And, yeah, we're planning on not skipping any of that. We're very well-known for that.
Right, I mean, it's so monitored at a real detailed level, so, anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. We currently have a project in Globe right now that is a huge buttress project, and we actually put up extra monitors to monitor the air.
Right.
So we do, we go a little above that.
Yeah, okay.
And, Mr. Chair, have you noticed Supervisor Miller's point? This is not saying you're going to build it, this is merely to change the zoning from moderate-low-density housing, or whatever that was, to green energy. And then, the process to turn it back to something else is just a matter of rezoning and a future date if this were not to occur.
That's correct.
Because we're not giving approval to build it at this time, merely to just change the zoning.
Correct, sir.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay.
Why don't we move on to item number 14? I was reminded that we're going to do a public hearing for all from 13 through 19, and so I won't open the public hearing just yet. So let's go to item number 14. It is Patrick here.
Chair Vice Chair, Board Members, good morning. Good morning, Plan Manager. I wanted to just make the announcement that when the decision comes for the voting, it's a supermajority required for all comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Z. Roberts, Senior Planner, here to present case PZPA 00624 for the I-8 Montgomery This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan designation for 121 acres of land from High Intensity Activity Center to employment for development of an RV and boat storage business and other compatible industrial uses. This is a property south of Interstate 8 and west of Montgomery Road, near Casa Grande and Eloy. The property owner is Bruce Galloway from Montgomery I LLC, and the applicant is Adam Bow from Whitneymore's Bow PLC. This is a county map showing the approximate location of the property in the county. And this is a map showing the existing comprehensive plan designation of High Intensity Activity Center and indicating the intent to redesignate this to employment for all 121 acres. So this is a diagram showing the, from our Penal County comprehensive plan, explaining how high-intensity activity centers work. We designate a periphery radiating from a center, a core zone, that indicates intensity of use for proposed projects to indicate future development for planning staff and to help recommend projects to go forward to the board here for final decision. Now, due to existing physical constraints in the property, namely the flood zone concerns, a number of these proposed uses under the core zone that are indicated for high-intensity activity centers would be incompatible or costly to develop on this site. This is a map showing the existing flood zone area. You can see here in the center, this is the area of the project being proposed, and this is all contributory from the greenwash and the associated riparian areas. This is a map showing the existing Montgomery Road and I Highway access for the property, leading to good commercial avenues for transport. So to date, staff has received no letters of opposition or support for this project. The property has direct access onto Interstate 8 via Montgomery Road, has proximity to an existing employment land use designation to the southeast, and the entire property is impacted by flood zone eight designations. So this proposal will propose to develop an employment land use on 121 acres with intent to develop an RV and boat storage later on and other compatible life uses for the property. The, we have received no letters of opposition or support from the public. At this citizen advisory committee, the committee recommended 15 to 0 to approve, and the Planning and zoning commission voted 7 to 0 to approve. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Any questions? Is the applicant here? Did they wish to present?
Good morning, Adam Bow, 2525 East Arizona-Biltmore Circle. It's 12:05, which means you're closely approaching lunch, and I know you have a busy, busy agenda.
He'll start to growl down there. We'll know it's time.
So out of respect for what you have, looking at the rest of your agenda, I'll be very, very brief. This case has been well-supported by staff. I'm grateful for the recommendation from the citizen advisory committee, unanimous in their approach, unanimous from the planning commission, and at the last planning commission hearing, we actually had people from the public come and speak in support. I think the nature of this case is really simple. I have 121 acres, that 88% of it's in a floodplain that I cannot develop it, and so the ability to put storage on 15 of the potential developable areas is a good opportunity to make lemonade out of some lemons, without any impact of anybody around us who has no adjacent project next to us. So I could go on and go through my 32 slides where I can help you move along your agenda quicker, happy to answer any questions you might have, but I recognize the room that you have today, and so I'll be brief.
Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, so I don't forget you, you still there?
Yes, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number 15.
It's 12:05, okay. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. Sangita Deuker, Senior Planner, Planning Division, presenting this case, the second solar in line. And this proposal is the Cactus Flower Solar requesting to redesignate 2,148 acres from two designations. We have the very-low-density residential and moderate-low-density residential to green energy production for a photovoltaic solar power plant. Land use change, as stated, is 2,148 acres, located eight miles south of Eloy, approximately seven miles south of I-10. Owner is Curtis 1035 LLC, Gordita LLP, Tambok Farms LLC, and Toon Family LP Number 3. We have the applicant agent, Cactus Flower Solar LLC, and Heather Weiss representing them. This is the county map location showing where this proposed solar project is. It's just south of Eloy. You can see that in the central south of the Penal County. This is the existing land use designation, as stated earlier again, it has two land use designations currently. It's very-low-density residential, which is one, zero to one dwelling units per acre, and moderate-low-density residential, which is one to 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and proposed designation is green energy production. We have this map showing the location and the project boundary with red dotted lines. And one can see that there are two zones, flood zones, the south and going from west to south, we have the flood zone A and flood zone X that covers these areas, and the roads that have been shown, which is the south 11-mile corner, South Widdy Road and West Ellis Road that are already existing and accessible. This is the surrounding land map, land use map, and the proposal is to an existing Eloy solar to its east side. This was already approved, and it is the same land use, which is the green energy production. And the red dotted line shows the proposed Cactus Flower Solar, and the shaded area is showing the proposed I-11 corridor. Current site conditions, agricultural land, relatively flat topography, no sensitive biological resources, no perennial surface water, wetlands, or no impacts to endangered species identified. Additional site considerations is a put. Additional site considerations is a potential future high-capacity corridor, I-11, that cuts across the side. Eloy Solar Project to the east, which already has a Green Energy Production land use, and the site having two flood zones, A and X. The proposal is a generation of two hundred and seventy megawatt and battery storage that includes the standard, uh, solar, um, infrastructure with solar array PB modules, single-axis tracking, the best for two hundred and seventy megawatts, the operations and maintenance building and associated infrastructure. There's a new APA substation via approximately thirteen-mile Gentile Transmission Line that is proposed for this. Public participation, the city of Eloy, uh, supported this project, uh, in, in support of the location, um, and, and basically it has also a neighbor, which has a similar land use classification. We had received, uh, you know, emails from Eloy Chamber of Commerce with, uh, sharing their, um, support, again, stating new economic activity with job creations and additional tax revenue. We received five letters in support, no, no houses that were impacted in close vicinity. It is an extremely remote area, uh, and, and the support letters did state reduction in water use with no visual impact for the residents of Eloy, and, uh, of course, the demand for clean energy. Citizens Advisory Committee recommended approval to planning and zoning with a wording of fifteen to zero. Some of the dis, items that were discussed was location, which was very important, with minimal disturbance far out in the rural area. It's adjacent to another solar land use, which is compatibility in terms of similar uses. No opposition that were received from property owners and low water usage or, and no visual impact. Planning and zoning recommended approval to the board with a word of seven to zero. Again, with the same, similar, uh, points or i, issues or items discussed were location with minimal disturbance, far out in the rural area, uh, adjacent to another solar land use and supported by the city of Eloy. Items for board's consideration, land use change aligns with the vision of the Penalt County Comprehensive Plan, which emphasizes sense of community, economic sustainability, and happy, healthy residence. Balancing Penalt County's population growth and demand for energy, which is growing. Renewable energy sources, implications and advantages, impacts to surrounding due to location of the project, inputs from various public agencies and property owners. And I'm open for any comments and feedback.
Any questions from any of the board members? Okay, I've seen there's none. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would they like to speak?
Yes, they do have a presentation.
Said a snippet. Or is, what's his name, a Titch?
Um, afternoon. Peter Furlough with Quarles &amp; Brady on behalf of the applicant. Like the previous item, we also have about thirty slides. Gonna forego the presentation and just hit a couple of the, the high-level items. So, uh, site selection was in November twenty-two. When choosing a site, we wanted to make sure we had community buy-in, that it would be in the right location. We listened to the board and found us a, a place that's, you know, not surrounded by residential, not planned for a commercial, uh, and I think that, uh, support has been shown both at the CAC hearing where we got unanimous approval, as well as Planning Commission, where we got, uh, recommended unanimous approval. We had a neighborhood meeting. We increased, uh, notice. With the increased notice, only one person showed up, and, uh, they were in support. Uh, none, no citizens have showed up at any of the prior hearings in opposition. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to, to hit on, other than, uh, of course, the benefits, we have tax, we have jobs, we can go over that, uh, they're all in the presentation. But, uh, the one other thing I wanted to note is, uh, we also have a landowner in support, uh, as far as, is this the best use for the property? He can speak to his property, uh, the best, um, as far as, uh, whether the current farming on the property is the best use, whether residential or whether the solar is the best use. And we have a full team here, if you have any questions for us.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any questions from anybody? Is the landowner here? Would you like to speak?
I'm Michael Toon from, uh, resident of Mesa. I'm just one of the landowners. I believe there are others. When I've looked at this property that is currently leased to a farmer, and because of the water rights that have been cut back substantially, he is really only able to farm fifty percent of the land at this point because of the water rights. And I've looked at how far out this is away from I-ten and any other, uh, development. It will be many, many years before anything in this area would be developed as far as residential or commercial use, and this is clearly the best use of that property would be, at this point, to put in a solar location that would provide energy for the county and other future development in other areas of the county for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions of any board members at this point? All right, let's go on to item number, where are we at? Sixteen or seventeen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sangita.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members. Sangita Deuker, Senior Planner, presenting the next case, PZPA 00824, Project Bella. Uh, this is a different case, um, as compared to the other solar projects. It is requesting redesignation of three hundred and fifty acres from Moderate Low Density Residential, which is MLDR, to General Public Facilities and Services for a four hundred and eighty megawatt natural gas-fired power plant with a four hundred and forty megawatt battery storage. The size of this parcels is three hundred and fifty acres. Location is south of Selma Highway, north of I-8, and one-point-five miles south of city of Casa Grande. Owners are Brian and April Rhodes. Applicant agent, we have Alex Hayes, representing Vittie Morris and Bow. This is the map showing the location. It is, uh, along I-8, just north of that, uh, central western portion of Penalt County. Existing land use designation is Moderate Low Density Residential, and proposed land use designation is General Public Facilities and Services. This is a reference map, uh, and, and aerial showing the surroundings. The Project Bella is marked with that red, uh, square to north of the I-8. One can see that the activity, High Intensity Activity Center, which was just shared by Patrick in the previous case, um, is just towards the eastern portion, and we can see that the blue marking, uh, is, is for that project, which was shared by, uh, Patrick. So, just trying to show the proximity of this, and it also has a common aspect of the flood, uh, portion, which is, you know, the flood, um, map, which I will show later, kind of crosses to the south boundary and crosses through this, uh, parcels. One can also see that there's Casa Grande Carmel Solar, which was approved last year to the further eastern side of the intensity center, and, um, one can see that a Tessa is in that employment portion to the further southern portion, south of I-8. This is just giving a reference of the surroundings. This is the part that I was talking about. It is, uh, again, uh, having two flood zones, X and A. The southern portion of the, of this project area is under flood zone A, but, and the flood zone X to the northern portion of this parcel. Again, uh, showing a perspective from, uh, the open space map and, um, sharing then, uh, overview of the open space and interconnectedness of the greenwash at the regional scale and the location of this project, uh, marked by a circle. To the south is the greenwash that is, um, referenced in the I, it's just north of I-8. This is the vicinity map of the electrical infrastructure. The green line shows the El Paso Gas Pipeline, and one can see that the five hundred KV line, uh, along with the two hundred and thirty KV WAPA Transmission Line kind of crosses east-west, uh, right through the project area. Again, um, a draft, uh, of the site plan, uh, showing the, uh, gas line in green and the red line showing the transmission lines that are existing. The, the site plan kind of, uh, shows the southern portion that is covered by the flood zone A, uh, largely weakened, and the northern portion of this larger site area is showing the, uh, the structures of this, uh, project. Some, uh, pictures, um, surroundings, east-west along I-8, um, and, uh, showing, uh, further east Casa Grande Carmel Solar towards, uh, looking on to from I-8, uh, we have this north and the Tessa to the south. Current site conditions, the site is accessed by a private driveway from Midway Road and currently used for agricultural operations, surrounded by low-density residential. We have the GR and the CR2 zoning. We have, uh, flood zones A in the lower half of the project area and X in the upper half. The open space, greenwash part of the connected open space, which is a major drainage feature, water flows northwesterly with a riparian habitat. Existing electrical and gas infrastructure, uh, which makes this, uh, location really unique, uh, it does have the existing two, uh, transmission lines and the El Paso Natural Gas Pipeline to the north edge of the property. Uh, the project overview is a thermal gas-fired power generation facility, uh, using natural gas, one of the first, I, one of the first ones proposed in Penalt County. I, I'm sorry to, to correct that. It is not the first. Uh, we do, we do have two more, uh, and we don't get that very often, probably, because the first one that I'm handling. Development of two principal components, which it talks about four eighty-megawatt thermal gas-fired generation and four forty-megawatt battery energy storage system. Site plan, the project footprint is on the northern half of the site, which is one hundred and fifty-eight acres of the three hundred and fifty acres. It utilizes existing Eastman's infrastructure for the high-voltage transmission and the natural gas pipelines. Five hundred KV line switcher will occur on-site with no additional electrical or gas infrastructure that is going to be required for this project. We received in public responses fourteen letters in opposition from the project with following concerns: proximity to houses, loss of rural lifestyle and environment, fire hazards and lack of fire emergency services to the area, air pollution during any fires if occurred in future, use of water from the well, which is already depleting, uh, in its water table, the sound of the power plant and the smell due to chemicals stored and used for the plant, which is ammonia. We did receive several letters in support, and some additional have been shared with you, uh, today. Uh, there, there's one in opposition, and we, there's one more in support that has been shared. The Citizen Advisory Committee recommended denial to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this was in response to these issues that I just talked about. The residential land use with a drastic change from residential to general public facilities, proximity to houses, concerns for loss of, uh, rural lifestyle, concerns for noise, chemicals, and visual impact. Lack of fire services and job created, uh, are not as substantial for the people of, of this area. It's stating as fourteen jobs, as permanent jobs created for this project. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with five to two to the board, um, with, with, uh, with the respect of location as an important aspect, with existing infrastructure for electrical and gas lines, uh, no additional infrastructure is required. City of Casa Grande, uh, shared that this area is, um, for a future industrial and a commercial uses, and therefore kind of, uh, shared a support for this. Gas-fired power plants, uh, in terms of reliability and resiliency. Balancing Penalt County's population growth and demand for energy was another aspect that was discussed, uh, the growing need, uh, for, um, clean energy. Items for the board's consideration, the Penalt County Comprehensive Plan Amendment talks about economic sustainability component balancing residential growth and job creation along with safety and welfare. Drastic changes from residential land use to public facilities and services and impacts to the surrounding residential area. Location with existing infrastructure for electrical and gas line, uh, since it's already existing on the site, it's a unique location, and therefore no additional infrastructure is required to, to really build one. Uh, gas-fired power plants are more reliable and more efficient. I'm open for any questions or comments.
Any questions? Supervisor McClure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to equip, so with the fire issue, that's, that keeps coming up, so who is the fire, um-
District.
District in that area, or what is the fire district in that area?
There is no fire district at this point in time, and, um, we have, uh, some inputs from the applicant that they're working to create one, um, and you may ask this question-
The applicant. Can I ask you? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe there's three, uh, gas-fired plants. There's SRP that's in Casa Grande, there's APS that's east of Casa Grande, and then there's one at Randolph, so I believe there's-
So, there are two in the uncor, incorporated area. One is the APS one, um, Red Rock. Uh, there's one in Coolidge, and the other two are in the incorporated areas of Coolidge and Casa Grande.
But they're still in the area.
Yeah, still in the pen, but-
And there's more coming, so-
Well, we already have, just saw, Santan. There's the one out in the Santan Valley area by Magma Ranch.
Is it? Okay.
They're, they're being built. I don't know if they're in production yet, but they're, they've already been built.
Okay. I looked over in Google, so that's what I-
Yeah, we need to get together and talk and figure out what's going on, right?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Is he, the applicant?
Yeah, we'll go to the applicant. Okay. Is the applicant or? Did you, Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have a question?
No, I said, Mr. McClure covered my question.
Okay, good. Come on up.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. Uh, my name is Alex Hayes, twenty-five, twenty-five East Arizona Biltmore Circle. Um, I know this board is familiar with a lot of energy projects, uh, a lot of solars come through this county in recent years. This particular use might be a little less familiar, so I do have a, a presentation with about seventeen or eighteen slides. I, I think they're probably useful for the discussion, but I promise I'll, I'll move through them as quickly as I can. I know there is a long agenda, so. The goal of Project Bella is to provide reliability capacity, uh, for an electric grid that is rapidly reaching its limits. You know, Arizona's been one of the fastest-growing states in the country in recent years. I just saw yesterday that there was twenty-twenty-three census data release that in that year alone, uh, the state added almost, well, over a quarter million people, so it, it's growing very quickly, and that, and that growth is not limited to just, you know, the Phoenix metro area or Tucson. This is happening here in the county, too, with, with the industrial growth along I-ten corridor and the, the population explosion that we're seeing in, in Maricopa and, and Queen Creek and, and elsewhere. And, and with that growth comes, uh, tremendous demand on our electric grid, and it's also happening at a time when we're retiring coal-fired generation, or have planned retirements for coal-fired generation, which is a good thing. It's decarbonizing our grid, but if, if we don't replace and supplement that generation, uh, with additional capacity, it's gonna have a, a substantial negative impact on our, uh, ability to provide reliable power in this state. And, you know, I think we're, if we don't do that, we're facing the real, uh, possibility of, of looking like- of, of looking like California with its rolling blackouts, you know, when, when they have, they don't have the, the capacity to meet their periods of peak demand. So, so how do we avoid becoming California? It's through projects like this one and I think that's the reason we've had interest in this project from pretty much every utility in this entire state, including ED3 and ED4 here in the county, which this property is actually in the service territory of, of I believe ED3. So, you know, looking at this project specifically, the natural gas generation includes 10 natural gas turbines with a total capacity of about 480 megawatts. I think one of the benefits of this project is its small footprint. The project footprint itself is about 155 acres and, you know, that compares very favorably when you look to, to solar generation. This type of facility requires less than a tenth of the land for an equivalent amount of generation. And that's not a knock on solar, solar is a very important component of our, our resource mix, but, and I think this project will actually be a key component of, of integration of, of new renewables. This is what's considered a quick ramping peaker plant, so it's not a 24/7 operation, it's really a reliability resource. It, it's only going to operate during those periods of time when solar generation is not providing sufficient capacity to meet the demand on the grid. And then the quick ramping structure of this type of facility allows it to provide that kind of backfill reliability resource. And the second component of the project is the grid charge battery energy storage, this would be about 440 megawatts of capacity and that will allow those batteries to charge during the day during those periods of excess solar on the grid and then redeploy during the periods of higher demand when that solar generation goes away. Here you can see a visual perspective of what this project would look like. This is about a little less than half a mile away, looking northwest from Mammoth Drive. You can see the, the existing transmission lines that are on the, of the left side of that image, those are 140 feet tall and I'll touch on those more in a moment. Here you can see the project, what it would look like from Interstate Eight, and I think this kind of highlights the, the proximity of this property to the interstate. And again, you can see those, those transmission lines that cut through the center of that image and go across the property. Now, in addition to the county entitlements that are required for this project, Project Bella has to receive a number of other approvals and permits in order to begin its operations. And one of those processes is, is through the Arizona Corporation Commission to receive what's called a certificate of environmental compatibility. And through that process, Project Bella went through the line sighting committee and that committee is made up of representatives from the counties, from municipalities, members of the public, Department of Environmental Quality, Department of Water Resources, among others. And in, in that process, there was four days of expert testimony and 900 pages of detailed filings. There were two in-person comment sessions in which members of the public could come and, and express their opinion on the project. And I think probably most importantly, there was a site visit made by the entire line sighting committee at which they, you know, were able to put their boots on the ground, see what this property looked like, see how it related to their, its surroundings to get an understanding of what this project would be like and what its impacts would be on the surrounding area. And the results of that, after all that review, was a unanimous vote of recommendation of approval of 11 to zero. And then ultimately, the, the Arizona Corporation Commission approved that certificate of environmental compatibility on October 8th. So why did we choose this location? This, you know, the Project Bella team, they looked around the state for suitable locations for a project like this and, and this property really stood out for a couple of key reasons, one of which being the existing infrastructure on the site. As, as Sangita mentioned, this property is bisected by both a 500 KV transmission line and the El Paso natural gas pipeline, so all the interconnection for this project will occur onsite. There'd be no need for additional regional infrastructure, no need to encumber additional property, so it really allows for efficient use of county land. And the other aspect is, is the land use compatibility, you know. You look at a, the site like this and its proximity to residential, you have a handful of homes to the northwest of, of the site, over 2,000 feet away, and then to the east of the site, you have residential that are about 4,225 feet away. And when you look at similar natural gas generating plants, this, this location and this site context actually compares very favorably with zero homes within 1,000 feet of the generators, 58 homes within a mile. You look at some of the other facilities that exist, you have generating stations like Kyrene and Santan with, with a significant amount of density surrounding them, which I think speaks to the compatibility of a use like this with single-family residential, where, you know, you don't see those impacts on, on human health, don't see the impacts on property values. If you did, I don't think you would see that level of density and indeed growth happening around projects like that. And then on the other hand, you have a facility like Sundance, which has very low density around it and I think speaks to the compatibility of a use like this in a more rural setting and, and able to maintain that kind of rural lifestyle for residents in the, in the broader area around it. Some of the land use attributes for a project like this, we, we heard from residents in the surrounding area that there were concerns about water use of this project and, and the reality is that this project is going to use less water than is currently used onsite from the agricultural operations. Project Bella has committed to capping its groundwater use at 420 acre-feet per year. We actually think it's going to be less than that, but in the event that we do hit that maximum modified use, it still represents a decrease of 43 acre-feet per year based on the average current use on, on this property. And we've also done studies that have verified there's going to be no impact on domestic wells. I know that was a concern of residents in the area. Domestic wells are of course at a, at a shallower depth than the wells that would be utilized for this project. And the reality is that where Project Bella's wells will be pumping from is actually separated within the aquifer from the, the shallower depth of the, the domestic wells, so when we're pumping from that deeper level, it's not actually impacting the, with the water table at the level of those domestic wells. In addition to the Arizona Corporation Commission, Project Bella has also been reviewed by the Pinal County Air Quality Control District for its air permit and that air permit was issued after review by the, the AQCD and the Environmental Protection Agency after 17 months of, of review and modeling. And that review looks at the modeling and compares it to the standards, National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which are designed to protect human health and welfare. And then the air permit that's issued establishes the operational parameters for this project. It, it limits the total operation time that this, that the natural gas generation can run. As I mentioned, this is a, a peaker plant, so it's not going to be providing that baseload power, it won't always be running. We think it'll actually be running somewhere in the range of 35% of the year. This air permit limits it to 42% of the year, so under no circumstances would we be able to exceed that amount of time. And then lastly, it does require continuous emissions monitoring with monthly reporting to ensure that we're, this project is continuing to, to meet the, the standards and criteria that are within that air permit. Another concern that we've heard from, from residents is potential for increased noise from this project. And the reality is that we're going to have to comply with the Pinal County noise ordinance. Under no circumstances can we exceed the ordinance limits. But our modeling shows that with this facility, it's going to only be, lead to an increase of two decibels over background noise and that's largely due to its proximity to Interstate Eight, but two decibels is barely perceptible to the human ear. So this really won't have a noise impact on, on residents in the surrounding area. That's based on sound modeling and so we will also, once this project is up and running and it, within 120 days of, of commercial operation, we will verify that modeling to, to study the actual sound generated from it. And to the, if for whatever reason we're exceeding those, those noise levels, we'll provide additional sound mitigation measures, whether that's sound sleeves or baffles or other engineering solutions to make sure that we're complying with that noise ordinance. And then I, I know this was a big question Supervisor McClure about related to fire. Through this process, we've learned that this property is actually not under the, the jurisdiction of any fire service provider, but we are currently in conversations with Casa Grande. We just received a letter yesterday from the city manager confirming that they're willing to provide service to this site on a contract basis. We're working through the terms of that contract, but they, they agree that that is something, that service is something they can provide. They're familiar with a use like this, providing service to the desert basin generating station. And we would have our own emergency response plan and would work with that fire service provider to make sure that their, you know, safety personnel are, are familiar with the project and, and the response measures. Another, I think, important component of this project is that Project Bella is committed to providing 20 acres of land at no cost to this community for the location of a, a fire and safety response office to serve the broader community, because our contract with Casa Grande would only service our site. That's all they're willing to provide at this time. But we want to provide a site that can also, will also be providing fire truck and EMS equipment and construct a warehouse and office so that this community can establish a, a local fire service district and get that off the ground to serve the surrounding community. And all that is, you know, in addition to and, and separate from the, the fire suppression measures that are, exist as a part of the project.
So a quick question then about that, if you're going to provide an area for a fire service in that area, then who pays for that service?
So yeah, that would have to be, you know, at the community level with establishing a fire district.
Create your own.
But we would be provide that kind of seed money with, you know.
Create an area to start one, but then they've got to support that, which would help the neighbors in the area, I get that, but I believe Supervisor Miller has a deeper question.
And.
I mean, that, not that I'm taking your power.
No, I would like to take Supervisor Miller, but just to your point, just to add to it, this would require rezon on the, on the property itself to a commercial piece, correct? So you'd be playing, you'd have to contribute towards something along those lines in your property tax, just like anybody else to.
That's right.
Compensate for a fire district, correct?
That's right, yeah. We would be kind of, the way we're looking at it is providing kind of seed funding, equipment and, and land to create a, a fire district and then it would have to be supported by the community on an ongoing basis if they, if they wanted to.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a fire district that's a stone's throw away from the site. It's the Stanfield Fire District. And I'm, I'm just curious why that can't be expanded or why that can't be included or, you know, to the site. I mean, I've asked that question before, I kind of get the deer in the headlight look from a lot of people, but I just want to offer that up, that there is a fire district that is in the area and how that could ever be included, I think, would be a real advantage to a lot of people out there if that's a possibility. But also, and also the, the aspect though, that cities can, they can, they can kind of do like arrangements to do outside city limits for fire services as well.
So, Mr. Chair, a quick question on that, because I know this has come up in other areas in the county and sometimes that, like you say, Stanfield doesn't have the rating to be able to cover something like this, just as a.
Yeah.
Devil's advocate part, but possibly they could attain that rating.
Right. And also, I, on these other sites that I've visited, there's typically a lot of, of fire protection equipment onsite just for the response if anything happens on the site. I suspect you might do something similar to that on your own site?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Miller for that comment. I, you know, with our operations, we're, at any one time, we're going to have 2 million gallons of water available for, for fire suppression and there'll be, you know, a lot of other fire suppression measures as part of the project. This is just to provide, this fire service discussion to provide, you know, in the event of emergency with additional, you know, emergency service personnel are needed, we want to be able to commit to the community that we have that contracted.
Okay. Okay. Any others? Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you have any now at this point?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
If I may just finish on one point.
You bet.
You know, there's two other, in the interest of time, I'll skip through these quickly, but a, a very substantial fiscal impact for the county, $167 million over the life of the project, 6.7 million annually, that represents a 148,000% increase compared to the existing agricultural use on the site from, in terms of revenue to the county and the various taxing entities. It's also going to be, have a significant economic impact in terms of its job creation, hundreds of skilled, jobs of skilled tradespeople through the construction phase and then an ongoing basis, 14 full-time employees. And, and these are not just, you know, regular old jobs, these are very high-wage paying jobs, skilled people with, from the plant manager on down, you know, very substantial salaries. And when you look at this from an economic multiplier standpoint, it's going to have a very significant impact on the surrounding area. And then, you know, this point, I, I think in some ways it's sort of burying the lead, this is a very important component of this proposal in that Project Bella is, is committed to establishing a community working group, which is going to be comprised of, of members of the community from the, within, living within a mile of the site, two members of the Project Bella team and then two members of the county. And, and Project Bella is going to fund this with $4.1 million and that will be able to be, that funding directed for the benefit of the community by the community. They'll have final say on kind of how that money is spent and where it's spent, at best use for that money. We're grateful to have the support from a, a variety of different entities, from the trade people that are, would work on this project to the Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce and then I think we're very proud to have the support of ED3 and ED4, which have noted that this is, project is very important for the continued ability to provide reliable service to their customers. And then, you know, this Project Bella, in addition to being a good neighbor for the, the immediate surroundings, we want to be a, a good contributor to the, you know, community at large and will do so through participation and, and partnership with some of the, the pillars of this community. And now just to sum up, you know, this project is, is going to help meet the growing regional energy demand and do so with, without the need for new regional infrastructure and can do so in a, in a manner that's efficient from a land use perspective. It's going to require less water than, than the current site usually currently uses and it, it can do so with, with minimal noise and visual impact to, to the residents in the surrounding area. We provided that fire solution, we're creating jobs, that we're going to have a substantial fiscal impact for the county. Now, I know this is just the, the first step in this entitlement process, so we, we know we'll come back before you through, through zoning and ultimately with the site plan approval, but we're committed to working with the county and working with the residents to make sure that this is a good project.
Okay. Is the landowner here? I know we had the other landowners. Yes?
You ready to speak?
Yeah, if you would. If you'd like to. I'm not going to twist your arm.
My name is Kirk McCarville. I'm the Pinal County Manager for the Land Advisors Organization. I'm here on behalf of Brian and April Rhodes, the property owners. Brian had to take his daughter to a doctor's appointment in California today, so he asked me to show, show up for him. So I've been in the land brokerage business in Pinal County for 44 years. I want to speak to two issues relative to this property. One is highest and best use. The location of the power line and the gas lines crossing through this property make it ideal for this use, but very detrimental to any other use. You won't find a home builder who wants to be in proximity to those infrastructures and in addition, there's no sewer or water infrastructure out there for alternative development. This is not only the highest and best use, it might be the only use that's suitable for this, other than farming. As for the farming, this is not a very good farm. My client bought it, I sold it to him, it was bank-owned, the previous owner went bankrupt. And so he bought it just because it was cheap. He's trying to make money farming it, it's very difficult, it's very far from his other operations. He has to bring his equipment over road from a very, very long distance and there's only enough water there to farm 200 of the 350 acres, so it's not very efficient. Relative to the concerns of the neighbors, I can speak very, very directly to detriment, detriment of values in that area, because I am in the real estate business for 44 years. I, you know, this is actually the sixth gas-fired power plant in Pinal County. I've done a lot of studies around the others and I live near the others. I, I drove by the Randolph, the Sundance this morning. There's new homes that have been built adjacent to Sundance, both on the north and the south since Sundance was built. The desert basin plant, I was on the city council when we approved that, I think you might have been too, 20 years ago, we heard some of these same concerns. These concerns exist because of the unknown. These, these people aren't familiar with what's taken place at the other five of these plants, but since this is number six, we can look at the other five. There is no evidence of any diminution of value in proximity to any of those other plants. There's no evidence of air quality problems, there's no evidence of chemicals or, these, these are basically fears of the unknown and they're valid concerns until you look at the data. The data on those other five plants don't, don't validate any of those concerns and that's out there for anybody to find, you can do it with phone calls. So I, I can, I appreciate the concerns, but I would, I would ask them to look at what's occurred in the vicinity of the other five that preceded this project. This is the highest and best use for this land, this is the, this is a great tax opportunity for Pinal County and it's very good for the environment. Gas is where, how we get away from coal and oil and gas is the bridge to the future for energy that's desperately needed in Pinal County.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I've just been reminded of the hour, it's almost one o'clock and we've got two more that we've got to hear and then open it up for public, or three more actually, and then more, actually, and then open it up for public. So, I think what I'm going to do is recess for lunch for 30 minutes, and then we'll reconvene, and then we've got the phone call at 2:00, correct? So, we'll recess for lunch for 30 minutes, and then we'll come back. Thank you. Okay, we're going to reconvene our, our normal Pinal County Supervisors meeting at this point. So, we've gone up to 16, we're on item number 17 now. Is any of the presenters here for this one? Oh, there we go.
Chairman, if I may, just for the record, Supervisor Kavanaugh has not joined the meeting.
Okay, is he going to, do you know?
Yes, Chairman, he will. And I'll make that announcement when he comes on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Young lady?
Can you hear me? All right, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name's Kendall Riley, my title is Planner, and I'm here to present to you case PZ-PA-009-24, TAP Solar. This is a request to redesignate approximately 1,089 acres from moderate-low-density residential to green energy production for a solar power energy plant with 250 megawatts of battery storage. Approximate location is off of North Hidden Valley Road and West Val Vista Road in the Hidden Valley Maricopa area. Owner is Hidden Valley Ranch Partners LLC. Applicant and agent is Keith with Kenley Horn Associates and Rose Law Group. Here is a county map showing the approximate location of the site marked by the red star. As you can see, the city of Maricopa is in the northeastern section, or above it, northeastern. Here is a aerial view showing the existing and surrounding land use designations. It is currently moderate-low-density residential with surrounding very-low-density residential and proposed regional park.
While we're going to the, excuse me, while we're going to the next slide, just for an announcement and for the record, Supervisor Kavanaugh is on the call. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And proposed land use designation is for green energy production.
Just real quick, Supervisor Kavanaugh, we're on item number 17.
Thank you.
All right, here's an aerial image showing some of the site existing development patterns. There is Thunderbird Farms to the eastern portion of the map, on the other side of the vehicle wash. The vehicle wash does run along project site, along with the Santa Rosa Canal, and there is a canal bisecting the project, and the proposed I-11 corridor does run through the project site as well, marked by the larger red line. Most of the parcel is located in Flood Zone X, relatively flat topography throughout the site. The environmental review tool identified impacted species. The project area is currently entitled for residential and commercial uses. The proposal is for solar generation of 250 megawatt solar energy and includes 250 megawatts of battery energy storage system, a 500 kilovolt utility station, and plans to interconnect with the transmission grid of the existing Pinal West substation. So we did receive some responses. The city of Maricopa, a jux to the following proposal, because it does not align with their general plan. Their general plan identifies the site for low-density residential, commercial, and open space. With the existing entitlements on place, it calls for 3,874 homes, 35 acres of commercial, 75 acres of improved roadways, two elementary schools, 35 acres of the Discovery Trail, and 65 acres of the vehicle wash. So they did not recommend approval for that reason. So we have gotten more letters since I have uploaded this PowerPoint. We have received two additional letters in support of the project, so five letters of support in total. But three letters in opposition were received with the following concerns, that it will lower surrounding property values, it will obstruct city development, not enough research on solar projects and the effects, batteries, questions on batteries and the impacts, and health and safety concerns. The support letters identified existing road infrastructure cannot handle any more residential, it won't deplete the water table, and concerns for educational opportunities for current residents. The Citizens Advisory Committee recommended approval 9 to 7, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6 to 1 to the Board of Supervisors. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. The applicant, are they here? Ms. Rose?
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. For your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group on behalf of Copia, and with me today is Dallas Pugh, the Director of Permitting, Madison McCullough, the Development Manager, Greg Liu, the Development Analyst, Kevin Nixter from Kenley Horn, and Jennifer Hall from my office as a Planner. I won't go through my presentation. We are just so happy, I have never had a case in the, I don't even know how many decades I've been coming here, where Thunderbird Farms has come out in support of the case. And I really feel good about that. I know that Robin Davis, who had a lot of election responsibilities today, couldn't be here to speak and support, but I'm just very thankful that at, at this point, we can, at least we could agree on one thing in the last 25 years, and this is it. So, I hope you'll support it too. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is the landowner here? We've let the landowner speak earlier, so.
Good afternoon, Chase Emerson, Hidden Valley Ranch Partners. The property is currently leased to a farmer. We think this is a great location for the project. We've been involved in many rezonings in Pinal County and elsewhere, have never seen so much support for a project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 18 then.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Supervisors. Item number 18. This is a PZPA-011-24 Frontier East Solar. This is a request for a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate approximately 160 acres from employment and high-intensity activity center to green energy. This is located just north of the Nissan Technical Center. Owner is Langley Stanmar. And this shows you the general location here, which is just south of Maricopa and just northwest of Casa Grande. This shows you the current land use designations there, and you can see the north end of the Nissan test facility there in that lower portion of the red. This shows you the surrounding zoning. So again, this is just north of the Nissan testing facility. It's, it's very flat area. You have also a lot of farms there. So this would be for generation of approximately 50 megawatts of solar, and then it would include a 400 megawatt of battery storage to interconnect with the existing Santa Rosa substation, which is nearby. Opposition, consideration, city of Maricopa objects to the proposed, as it doesn't conform to our current MPC and commercial land use designations. And also, it does not align well with the targeted goals of the High Intensity Activity Center, primarily the identified site lies partially within areas which should accommodate higher intensity uses such as employment, commercial, hospitality, entertainment, et cetera. Proposed also lies within an area of environmental concern. Environmental report identified multiple species that would be impacted. Support, again, it's near the Santa Rosa substation, which is existing, and it has gained support from the CAC as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would use also very little water while aiding with the, the growing energy needs of the county. Citizens Advisory Committee voted for approval 13 to 2, and P&amp;Z recommended approval 7 to 0. Any questions? The staff would be happy to answer, any questions the board may have.
Okay, any board members? Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What species of animals did it impact?
There were a couple listed, but I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you specifically, and probably sometimes they use the Latin names, which is extra unfamiliar.
I'm somewhat familiar with the area outside of the, the mourning dove and the white-winged dove. I don't know what else would have been out there.
I'm pretty sure the gila monsters were okay, though.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. All right. Is the applicant?
Chair and members of the Supervisors, Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group, and I'm here for Copia and Langley, Stacy Brimhall. I just wanted to point out, and I won't go through my presentation, but this is surrounded on two sides by the Ochjin community and the other side by Nissan proving grounds. So it's really the perfect place for a solar facility, which will be not disturbing of, especially Nissan. We have verbal support from Nissan, they like this as a neighbor, and so I hope you like it too. And I'd answer any questions.
Any questions? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I, did I give you a chance Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is the landowner here? Or do you just were representing them? Okay. Item number 19, let's go on to that one now. Patrick?
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Patrick Zaire Roberts, Senior Planner, presenting case PZPA-01224 for the Sun Hill Project. This is a request for a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate 96 acres from moderate-low-density residential to 80 acres of employment and 16 acres of mixed-use residential-focused for the purpose of developing a battery energy storage system, data center, and mixed-use residential-focused developments. So the property in question is located on the southeast corner of North Felix Road and East Judd Road in Arizona Farms. The property owner is Judd Ventures LLC, and the applicant is Rose Law Group and I Plan This is a map showing the approximate location in the county where the property is in question. This is a map showing the existing moderate-low-density residential designation. You'll note this, this property is immediately south of the Magma Ranch subdivision, and the proposed development would, would indicate mixed-use residential focus on the front 16 acres on the north side of the property, and employment on the south 80 acres. This is a vicinity map showing the surrounding zoning and proximal developments. You can see this, this property is developed on, or sorry, is incorporated by the Town of Florence on three sides, but vacant in all three of those sides. We have not received any comments from the Town of Florence regarding this project. So, the property is in close proximity to the Magma Ranch subdivision and has direct access to major arterial roadways. The development, the proposal's developed employment, land uses on 80 acres, and then developed mixed-use residential focus on the north 16 acres. The intended employment uses could encompass battery energy storage systems, data centers, office spaces, and warehousing. Mixed-use residential focus uses can accommodate commercial retail, neighborhood commercial, professional offices, and multifamily residential as potential later land uses. So, staff has received two letters of opposition in this case. There was concerns that there was incompatibility with residential land uses and too close to an existing subdivision. There's concern that the property value may decline and increase taxes, concern about increased traffic and loss of rural and natural character, concern of long-term viability of the project near homes, desire to see this type of development in a business corridor elsewhere, and concerns of increased traffic demand and unsuitability of current roadways. So, additionally, one, one letter of support was provided during the Citizens Advisory Committee, and again, these covered similar issues, incompatibility with residential land uses and too close to an existing subdivision, concerns of property value decline, increase of taxes, and concern of increased traffic loss or loss of natural or rural character. Despite this, the Citizens Advisory Committee did recommend approval 15 to 0, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 7 to 0. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Any question, board members?
Supervisor McClure? Quick one, looking back at the letters of opposition, just that one. So if you decrease the property value, and how does that increase your taxes? I'm sorry, but it's a percentage?
I, I would, wouldn't want to speak for the applicant.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, that's, I've never seen that before, that's an interesting.
Yeah, that was a comment that was made, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and I apologize, there is also one other detail in this case. At the time of publication of your packet, the resolution included placeholders for Exhibits B and Exhibit C describing the land use areas for the proposed mixed-use residential land use and the employment land use designations. That has been provided to the Clerk of the Board and revised.
Landowner?
Chair and members of the board, Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group, and I'm here on behalf of Judd. And maybe I'm just going to flip to a quick, I just want to show you. We got two unanimous approvals, one from the CAC and one from the Planning Commission. And I think that's because when you look at the site, it's really at the corner of, you know, industrial and employment and employment with gas plants and substations and this. And I think in addition to that, many of you have talked about the lack of commercial in the area, and this will put, you know, 16 acres of commercial right up on Judd. So, we'll have to come back with a zoning case for the exact use on the employment, and we'll look forward to that, hopefully, if you support this today. As for any questions, thank you.
Any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Okay, I think that's all of them, right? Okay, so I will now open the item up for public comment, or public, this is a hearing, public hearing. So, anybody wishing to speak from the public may do so in regards to any one of these particular projects, items number 13 through 19. So I have a list here already. Is Mr. Brian Cox here? Would you like to speak?
Hello, I am here to try and, try and make people aware that there is safety precautions that are now available for battery storage systems. And this is quite a topic today, battery storage systems usually involved with solar electric plants, solar voltaic generation. Batteries have had problems in the past in the Phoenix area, where I had worked for Arizona Public Service before I got hurt. In one of those particular battery runaways, which is a battery fire, firefighters attempted to go in the steel structure to fight the fire. When they opened the door, there was a explosion that happened, which happened, does happen in thermal runaway and at times. Because if pressure inside the vehicle exceeds its capability, there is an explosion. According to what I've read, it can be up to 1,500 PSI. There was two firefighters that were blown off their feet. After this had happened, fortunately, there was no fatality, but it shook enough people up that in Maricopa County anyway, the decision was made that firefighters would no longer enter into a battery fire. They would clear the area of people and make sure no one got hurt. These battery storage systems abbreviated BES, with the particular batteries that are used, there are several different chemical, chemical makeups. All of them have a specific. All of them have a specific operating safe temperature. The fact is, in the Arizona southwest desert, air cooling was insufficient to maintain safe operating temperature. Fact. Liquid cooling is available now. It's a new and upcoming thing. It can be upgraded to be incorporated into storage buildings that were designed for air. It does a better job of cooling, keeps batteries within safe operating parameters where you never reach the danger point. There is several things can contribute to a runaway, physical damage. Time's up. I hope I've been a good teacher. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I have Fernando Soto. Is he here? Item number 13. Fernando? Okay. Next is Jordan Schneff. Did I pronounce that correct? Okay. The next one I have is Theron Connor. Oh, we were all getting excited.
What did you guys do, make a joke about me?
No. Which one are, are you Theron?
Yes, I am.
No, we weren't. He was.
I happen to know that guy. He's all right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. It was listed 13 minutes 16 that I'm speaking on.
Okay, go ahead.
According to available data, the sun delivers roughly 10 exawatts of energy to Earth every minute, which is significantly more than the total energy produced by humans in a year. And a fact amount of solar energy hitting Earth in just two minutes surpasses the entire world of energy consumption. That should make you rethink of how you think about energy. Today, I'd like to highlight the benefits of a proposed 480-megawatt gas-fired generating facility alongside a 400-megawatt battery-energy storage system on 351 acres. This project stands to greatly enhance our community energy reliability and resilience. By combining thermal generation with battery storage, we ensure a stable energy supply even during peak-demand times, which reduces the risk of blackouts and helps balance intermittent renewable sources like wind and solar. Additionally, this hybrid setup allows for a cleaner transition to renewable energy as stored. Energy can be efficiently deployed, minimizing the need for continuous fossil fuel use. Sorry, I wrote a couple papers. Finding this development brings economic benefits, creating hundreds of jobs during construction and offering a boost to local businesses. With tax revenue generated, we can also invest more into our community infrastructure, education, and other public services like public safety and the police. In summary, this project represents a sustainable and forward-looking investment in Pinal County's future. I urge you to support it as we work towards a cleaner, more resilient community. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Theron.
Theron. Theron Connor. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm with Launa.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Okay. Next one I have is Joanne Mendoza. Is she here today? I know we got a letter from her. Do we still have anybody out in the, okay. We're good. Okay. Okay. The next person I have is Chris Thompson.
My name is Chris Thompson, and I came today to oppose the solar farm at San Manuel, item number 13 on the agenda today. I am not necessarily against the solar farm. I think the jury is still out. Brian had a good presentation on the possible things that could be done with it, but I've seen no statements from the company saying that they would actually do the things that Brian has talked about. I have found out I'm in a unique position because I'm a ballot chaser. I've gone to over 500 homes in San Manuel. Now, I'm there for other reasons. I'm there to talk about who's going to be president, but while I've been going around, I've been talking about the solar farm with people. I have only found three people who refused to sign the petition I have been distributing that I sent to the supervisors last week. I understand that it hasn't been received, but in doing that, it's become obvious that the people in the area just plain don't know anything about it, and they need some time to be educated. So what I'm asking today is that people, that we get some time to educate the people and ask them if they are willing to sign my petition stopping the solar farm. So I appreciate your time, and thank you. You all have a good day.
Thank you. Wendy Torres.
Hi, my name is Wendy Torres. I've been a resident of San Manuel for 58 years. Thirty-four of those years were spent teaching in the Mammoth-San Manuel School District. Members of the Board of Supervisors, please raise your hand if you've driven into San Manuel in the last six months. One. Thank you. I asked you to do this to see if you have witnessed firsthand the damage that Sanzilla has done to our desert while installing their Great Wall of China, endless power towers and lines that will provide energy not for our community, not for our county, not for our state, but for California. Now, we're here today entering round two as Advana Solar Company tries to convince you and the citizens of San Manuel that they will be an asset. But before you take a vote today, as Chris said, I challenge you to first answer the following questions. Number one, has the county conducted any studies to see what the effects of installing a solar farm will have on the property values in the homes of San Manuel? All studies on the Internet show a decrease in property values. Who will make the restitution to our homeowners? Number two, what would be the effect of the habitat in our area? All studies show a disruption in wildlife from solar farms, especially birds and bats, but Kevin Johnson from Advana spoke at the Planning and Zoning meeting of an environmental study and assured everyone that no animals would be affected. I find it odd that the area along the San Pedro River, less than a mile to the east of the solar farm, was fenced off years ago as a riparian area with surface water. Mr. McClure, you talked about the fence, but as far as I know, in my 58 years there, it's barbed wire. The animals go under it, through it, and over it. It's also compromised in many areas. Was Advana's study conducted by an independent company, and do you have the results of that study in front of you? Number three, Mr. Johnson spoke of this project generating $70 million in tax revenue for state and local taxes. Green energy companies receive all sorts of subsidies from the government, which lowers their tax liabilities. Is that $70 million over 30 to 35-year? Is it accurate? How much of the money will be left after the state and the county take their portions? A breakdown like Alex Hayes presented this morning had for the gas plant would be helpful. The proposal from Advana states that they're excited to partner with local organizations that support the San Manuel community. But is the county going to write contracts with Advana to assure that they give back to the community? I shared with Planning and Zoning that Eager, Arizona, received an indoor-dome sports facility for their high school largely funded by property taxes levied on Springerville Generating Station Power Plant. How does your committee plan on ensuring that there will be a benefit for San Manuel residents? And number four, Mr. Johnson also stated in his presentation to Planning and Zoning that the project will be connected with the regional electrical grid existing at the San Manuel substation. What updates will be needed to do at this facility, and will that cost be passed on to those living in San Manuel as millions of kilowatt-hours whiz above our heads? Our community could benefit if the government agencies involved in approving these projects were working for us. I ask each of you, is our community getting a fair exchange?
Thank you. Mark Corderas. Correct me when you get him up here, would you?
Chairman Goodman, I hear my name pronounced so many different ways that as long as you try, I'm go with it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Good afternoon, honorable commissioners. For the record, Mark Corderas' address is 10797 West Randolph Road, Casa Grande, Arizona, here to testify in favor of items 13, 15, and 16, namely Oortown Solar, Cactus Flower Solar, and specifically Project Bella. Here representing a number of electrical workers, carpenters, operating engineers, and boilermakers in Pinal County and our signatory contractors that currently number in the hundreds. Every day, our folks go to work building Lucid Motors, LG Battery Plant, some of the solar plants in the area, and finally are hard at work expanding the APS Sundance Power Plant. I want to specifically thank the owners of Project Bella for their partnership, openness and willingness to meet with local stakeholders, including us, whenever they are asked. Our skilled construction workers are painfully aware that every day they step onto a job site, they're essentially working themselves out of a job. We want this plant to happen. Some of our folks have to drive to Phoenix and Tucson every day to work, which takes hours away from their families and their church and other activities that they do on their free time. Our workers want to be able to work a full shift and still have time to pick up their kids after school and help them make dinner. Approving Project Bella will enable us to continue to live and work in our local community. We're proud of our trades and also proud to be members of this community, or in absolute support of Project Bella, and look forward to the day when we could put shovels in the ground, and we ask for your support of item numbers 13, 15, and 16 today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to listen, well, it's 1:59 now. We're close, right? Yeah, we're going to recess. We've got that 2 o'clock conference call with our attorney. So can I get a motion to go into executive session? So moved. Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in executive session. We don't know. Hard to say. But we'll be back. Can I have a motion to come back, to come out of executive? Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move.
So moved. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're out of executive session. Okay. All right, we were right in the middle of public comment, so I have Deb Massager. Hey, we did. Well, make sure you, when you come up here, pronounce it right for us on the record. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, it sounds like Supervisor Kavanaugh did join the call. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Mansager from San Manuel. I'm here for number 13. In June of 1999, Broken Hill Property, otherwise referred to as BHP, shuttered both the mine and the smelter complex in the unincorporated town of San Manuel, Arizona. 2,500 people lost their jobs, decimating San Manuel and negatively impacting the neighboring towns of Mammoth and Oracle. BHP will continue to generate an income from Oortown Solar Farm through the leasing or selling of their property, while the residents of San Manuel receive nothing from the transaction. I'm going to use a word right now. You most likely will be offended. Please don't be offended, because I'm delighted that I have a new definition for this word and I can use it legitimately without being looked at like I'm weird. As elected members of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, I believe you are facilitating in the process of pimping, don't panic, pimping to make use of, often dishonorably, for one's own gain or benefit. Why is it okay for a group of individuals totally unrelated to or invested in the community of San Manuel to make and/or propose life-altering changes to our community with absolutely no compensation? Let me say that again, no compensation to the residents who have chosen to call San Manuel their forever home? Have you, as an individual or as the elected group you are, the Board of Supervisors for all of Pinal County, thought or even considered any of the following? What will happen to our property values? How will our homeowner's insurance be impacted? How will the residents of San Manuel be compensated? We are in San Manuel because we choose to be. We are still residents of Pinal County. We have an unpeated night sky. We have, just recently, now I lost my place, oh my gosh, I can't believe it. We had an ocelot sighted in San Manuel. I'm losing time, and I'm really panicking now. I am so sad that we are having to fight for the place that we live. We have, it's been talked of, the wildlife propose, or the environmental studies, but what part, how active and real is that with our recent sighting of an ocelot? We have coda Mondays, we have bobcats. It's incredible what we have in our quiet town that is just, we're there because we want to be there. And before I lose, I want to say, I'll step away because that's not me, Wendy Torres, who spoke before me, forgot to, was unable to say in her closing paragraph. I ask for a no vote from Wendy. I ask for a no vote.
Okay.
If you have not recently visited our community, or if you are unable to answer any of the above questions she asked you, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll take it.
You'll have to go to the clerk. Thank you.
I'm really good at handing things out.
We already have that.
You bet.
She read that already.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Sasha, we already have that.
Okay. All right. You ready? Boyd Smith. Is Boyd here? Item 14 and 16, correct.
Chairman Goodman, I'm going to ask for, I'd like to speak on both projects separately with different timeframes. I'm going to ask for your permission.
A minute and a half for each one.
Okay. They kind of apply to both, but, okay. My name is Boyd Smith. I've developed in four states, including Washington, Texas, Utah, and Arizona. We do residential development, background from commercial financing. It's pretty diverse. So the first project I'd like to talk about, so we'll just do the minute and a half there, I guess, I support. It's a good project. It fits the area. I've got over six parcels, 113 acres in that area. I think it's good for the neighborhood. I think it's, I'm for development, I'm for growth, I'm for seeing Casa Grande get better. We've spent about $3 million of our own equity and money in that area. Supervisor Miller helped us out a little bit on that project. We're very grateful for what supervisors do, and we're grateful for Casa Grande and its growth. So those types of things, we think, are really good for the community. I'd like to talk, I'm going to skip over and go to Bella real quick because we've got a little short period of time. We've taken, our project is 103 acres. We took a dead golf course, revitalized it. We've really made it beautiful in that area, and a lot of people that live out there, you know, they come up here and say there's nobody that lives out there. There's about 500 residents in that area. Arizona Water Company has purchased some land to do a water park. There's going to be about another two or three, maybe 5,000 people within the next 10 years. So I just disagree with that notion that it won't impact anybody. Project Bella, natural gas-fired plant, it is going to lower property values. I don't care what anybody says, it will lower property values. Number two, it has no fire district, okay? So you guys have come up with some solutions, they've come up with some solutions. The problem is that solution is the property owners in that area are going to pay the taxes to support that fire station that supports this project that they do not support. Nobody in that area supports the project. Everybody that you hear supports it, they don't live there. Not one person that lives in that area supports the project, okay? We have 100 and We have 100 and some signatures that we sent earlier in this debate. Let's talk about gas-fired plants real quick. In Texas, you know why they have outages in Texas? Because they rely on gas-fired plants. It freezes, and it goes, it struggles. You guys are approving eight to 10 solar projects a year, solar's great, right? Because you can take it away if you find some other energy project. These plants, they're like coal plants, when you put them in, they just don't go away. So what happens? You guys keep approving eight to 10 projects a year, so what happens? This plant is gonna be obsolete, you're not gonna need this, right? Solar and battery technology is getting better and better, and you can remove it. So you're gonna, if you approve it, maybe you don't approve it, if you don't approve this project, it doesn't, it's not the eyesore, it's not gonna hurt property values, it's not gonna hurt taxes, and it improves the area. It's bad, it's gonna look bad, it's gonna be a stain on Pinal County in the years to come, maybe not right now, but it will, especially when it becomes obsolete, and it's gonna, health-wise, it's gonna impact all the people in that area, I don't care what they say, there's no, it's a fossil fuel, it's not clean energy. Solar would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, Michael Toon? Or is that Michelle? You'll correct, oh, oh, oh. Okay, Michael Toon. I'll keep it aside in case he does come. Fernando Soto. Did I say, you know what, these are ones I've already called out, I think.
Here he comes.
Oh, here he is, Fernando.
Hi, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, my name is Fernando Soto. My address is 10629 West Randolph Road, Casa Grande, and I'm here on behalf of La Junta, Labor's Union, Local 1184. We really believe that having this Bella project is gonna really help the workers who live in Florence, who live in Casa Grande, who live in the area. Any construction project who is in the area is gonna help the construction workers, because most of them are looking for a job, and they go far away, they go to Phoenix area, and they have to spend an hour, two hours, a lot of traffic, and also, they're gonna spend a lot of money on gas, and they're gonna save time. So that time, they can have that time with their kids, with their family. So I really believe if we, if you support this project, it's gonna help the residents of Florence and the surrounding areas. So I support the project, and I ask the board to support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Edward Ray Kuchar?
Thank you, gentlemen. You know, I've always thought zoning and rezoning as being a benefit to the community. Unfortunately, you know, we have, and I'm sorry, I am, you have my name?
You can announce.
I live in Casa Grande.
Announce your name for me.
Eduardo Real Kuchar. Zoning is supposed to be a benefit to the community. This Bella plant, you know, aside from the pollution and aside, it's a merchant power plant, a merchant power plant. They will sell power to the highest bidder. It's not gonna cut our electric bills down, it's not gonna give us more energy, they're just gonna fill a gap and sell it at a higher rate, that's the whole idea. It's a merchant power plant, totally unregulated. You know, aside from the water issues and the noise and the pollution of this plant, you're putting us at risk. There is no fire prevention, there is no, we have no fire department in the area, even if they were to call for services from other areas, you know, the earliest we could get is 15, 20 minutes away. I'm sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought, but this is not beneficial to the community. There's nothing to benefit from this power plant. It's built on a flood plain, oh, it has, it's not gonna flood for 85 years, really? Go tell it to the people in North Carolina or in Texas, it's not gonna flood. In California, where the desert flooded, the wash extends out for miles and miles. So if it does flood, or if there is a best system that catches on fire, all those contaminants are gonna go down into our soil. They're sitting on top of our aquifer, and they're gonna take water from our aquifer, they're gonna run my well dry. Their original survey said that, because they ran a survey based on agricultural wells, not residential wells that are at a lower depth, I'm sorry, it's less of a depth than the agricultural wells. I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Paul Cataldo?
Good afternoon. My name's Paul Cataldo, and I live at 30420 West Selma Highway in Casa Grande. And when the developers talk about the Northwest residents in accordance to the development, I am kind of those Northwest residents. I'm urging you guys to, as a board, as residents of Pinal County, to look at the health and safety as far as the best systems. Everything that gets talked about during all of the hearings, and I've been since May, I've met with Supervisor Miller, he's been very gracious to host us a couple times, and talk with the developer on a one-to-one, everything's talked about the turbines, nobody talks about the best systems. And the health and safety of the best systems to the communities, the surrounding areas, is a very high risk. We're in the desert, we get high temperatures, California has recently had several fires, and Escondido, the mayor of Escondido from a recent fire just a couple months ago, is talking about putting a moratorium on best systems for further studies. At minimum, if you guys are looking to approve this, at minimum, can we table it? Get some more studies, get some more facts on the best systems. We don't have a fire service currently, I was just talking with Mark, the developer, and he's supposed to get me a letter from Casa Grande. I just talked to the fire marshal yesterday, Frank Ritchie, and he was not aware of any discussions about contracting with Bella Project. As far as he knew, they didn't contract outside of Casa Grande jurisdiction. As far as the unions go, I applaud them for coming and sticking up for their jobs. Regardless of where this project goes, they will always have the job. I know they're in contact with the project, they're doing an excellent job, I'd like to see the jobs stay local to our residents, but they won't be out of a job if this gets declined, because it most likely could move down by Lucid, there's connections down there that are very similar, not exact, but probably very similar to what is here. The noise, we're still not sure about the noise, I've always complained about the noise of being almost 40 decibels, 42 decibels, at my property, at my home, it's like standing beside an air conditioner outside, and we would hear that 24/7, because that would be the best systems. And until the systems go in, we won't really know what the actual impacts are. The water is a big concern. These turbines will use daily. Currently, the agriculture uses, approximately draws water once a month, once, a month and a half, the aquifer has time to recharge. Again, we don't know what the impact's really gonna be, so, thank you for your time. I gave you some documentation of the recent articles we found about the best systems, and I hope that educates you more on these systems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Margarita Levas, and I live at 3536 South Whispering Sands Drive, Casa Grande. I live about a mile from the proposed Bella Project. This board approved a raceway, which is just south of I-8, and, I'm sorry, I should've mentioned that my comments are regarding item 16. And this raceway was supposed to have a certain level of decibels of sound, and I can tell you that I wear hearing aids, I have two hearing aids, and even without my hearing aids on, I hear the sound from the raceway, which is about four miles away. So my concern is, who is enforcing that level of sound? And what will happen with the Bella Project? And who will enforce that they remain within the level that they've committed to? I have a question regarding the proposed Citizens Advisory Group, which I hope will be answered, in terms of the four community members. Who will appoint the four community members? Who will ensure that all of the promises that are being made are being kept? Who will enforce those? There's some concerns about water. In fact, Supervisor Miller wrote a letter to the editor in regards to the water supply, and it's to ensure that there's, to satisfy the state's 100-year water supply requirement, and Pinal County is also concerned, of course, as all other counties, that no subdivisions, new subdivisions can be approved without first proving that water can be provided to those homes for 100 years. And I think that's a great project, something to work on. My concern is for those of us who are already here, and who's going to ensure that we have our water? The best systems, they're a new technology, there are no standards, no new regulations for them, there are some counties and cities in California and in other states that are considering or have placed moratoriums on the best systems until they can further study this new technology. I ask that you table this issue for further study on these systems, as your counterparts in other states have. And lastly, for Supervisor Miller, Supervisor Miller, I've called your office on three separate occasions, I've also sent you an email, and I have yet to receive a response from either yourself or from any of your staff. So I'm asking you all to please remember that you're representing us, the residents of Pinal County, as well as bringing industry into the county, and that we do appreciate responses to our concerns. Thank you.
My name is Bert Chapman, I live at 3395 South Mammoth Drive in Casa Grande, Arizona. I'm about a mile from this project, Project 16, the Bella Project, and I have some great concerns about that, as was referred to the racetrack that was approved a few years ago, we were all in agreement as to what the decibel level would be, and now I wake up every morning to hearing all that crap, because every winter they come back to have their races, and I called the county about that to complain, and I was told there's nothing I could do about it. And I don't think we have very good representation when that happens, because we have concerns that need to be addressed as well. And I want to remind you that you do represent us, that's why we vote for you. These other companies coming in, you do not represent them, and I've heard it referred to by one of you members of the county, that they are our customers. Well, we don't need customers, we need representation, and we need help here. I'm concerned about what kind of emissions we may have, and because of I can't complain about a racetrack noise, if this thing goes in and we have noise, pollution or whatever, am I gonna call the county and get a response as there's nothing I can do about it? I don't think that's the right thing to do. I would ask you to please consider this, how would you like a project like this in your front yard, or that would affect your children or grandchildren? Because there are many people out there that do have children, and a lot of people don't even know that this is happening. And I have also attended many meetings over this, there's nothing really cut and dried about any real agreements, all it's been spoken about, there was also a meeting that was held with the Board of, of the zoning board, that there were 15 members on it that voted against this, that's never been posted up there. It was only the last one we went to, where there was seven, two of them voted against it, and five voted for it. So I would like you to take that into consideration, and I know of five wells in the area now that have gone dry. That's because of the lack of irrigation, because they lost part of their water from the CAP canal, and that irrigation water, it's not, they used to go down in and rebuild the aquifer well, and they talk about how we're in a different aquifer? We know water goes downhill. So if they're up, the water that the residents have is up above, and these guys are pumping from below, and this is sand country, we don't have shale down there, it'll pull that water down, there will be more wells go dry. And I know that Arizona Water Company is re-drilling a well right now on the corner of Cornman and Montgomery, that's where we were getting our water from. That well has gone dry. So, and they furnish the water for a lot of people, so please, consider the fact that this will affect us in more ways than we understand. So my concern is, what's gonna happen down the road when we start getting these concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
My name's John Callaway. I live at 30043 West Blackmore. I'm about a half mile from the Bella Project. I don't need to repeat a lot of what's already been said. Let me speak from the heart. A lot of us have put our life savings into these properties. If there's an evacuation, who pays for major evacuation of the stock that's in that area? Is Kavanaugh here?
He's on the phone.
Yes. Are you on the phone? Actually, you're my representative. I don't need to repeat what's already been repeated, I think too much repetition is uncalled for. But I speak these things from the heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway.
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Deanna Pence, I live at 30420 West Selma Highway. I'm about a half mile north of where this Project Bella is supposed to go in, and I am opposing this project. We'll be about a half mile from the battery storage facility. I've got a article here that I want to read, it's from a Kennedy Mays, Big California Battery Storage Facility Fire Burns for 11 Days, this was posted on June 14, 2024. A nasty, long-burning fire in San Diego, California, last month provides graphic evidence of a risk inherent in large lithium-ion battery energy storage systems. On May 15, a fire broke out at a 250-megawatt battery energy storage facility in East Ote Mesa, San Diego suburb near the Mexican border. The fire burned through the roof of the building housing the lithium-ion batteries at LS Powers Gateway Project, prompting local fire officials to issue evacuation orders and road closures in the areas surrounding the storage plant. It took six "It took six days to contain the fire, and it was still smoldering 11 days later, according to the California Local News Service headline. The evacuation order was lifted, but road closures remained in place. During the height of the firefight, an estimated 50 firefighters and county and city hazardous materials teams were involved in the effort." Lithium-ion batteries are constructed with flammable electrolytes and reactive lithium salts, which can generate a violent exothermic chemical reaction if the battery is damaged, overcharged, or exposed to high temperatures. Thermal energy generated by these reactions can cause a thermal runaway condition, which in turn enters a cycle of rapid increase in temperature and pressure within the battery resulting in explosion or fire. These batteries cannot be contained by normal firefighting methods. The way they handle them is they just contain them. They put water on the other batteries to make sure that they don't catch on fire, and then they let it go. And it will go however long it needs to. I do have concern about this. I'm a half a mile away. We have animals. We have horses. We have goats. We have chickens, dogs. If an evacuation order is issued, and they usually are, what are we supposed to do? I haven't heard anything about that. Where do we go? Who pays for that? What happens to, you know, my family as far as the batteries they give off, very toxic fumes, potentially? I mean, it's happened. There have been fires all across the US, Europe. They have happened. And this is fairly new technology. So it's going to, as these continue to go in, it could expand. I say, let's put a hold on these until we actually have a little more understanding about these batteries, because what they're looking to do, there's not enough people to fight it.
Thank you, Ms. Pence. Jacob Evanson.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Jacob Evanson. I'm the Business Manager, Secretary Treasurer of Boilermakers Local 627. I'm also the Secretary Treasurer of the Arizona State Building Trades Council. I'm a third-generation boilermaker here in Arizona. My first job was at the San Manuel Copper Smelter in 1999, when they were doing the furnace rebuild. Got laid off from that project, and I moved on to the next projects, projects after that, Springerville Generation Station, Farmington, New Mexico, San Juan Generation Station. I am here representing boilermakers for the state of Arizona, who work on projects such as the LM 6000s. We have currently boilermakers working at the Sundance Power Plant. We have, they did the LM 6000s at the Desert Basin Power Plant. They did the LM 6000s at the Aguafria Power Plant. And we are in support of bringing in people into the boilermakers and helping train construction workers to work on power plants such as these. We are here to support community benefits and bring young people into the boilermakers' trade and into our apprenticeship program, to train them how to weld, to train them how to rig and do projects such as this. And we are in support of the Project Bella, the LM 6000s there. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Lerma. If I started it, just make sure you correct me when you come up, okay?
Hello, sir. My name is Richard Lerma. I'm the President of the Boilermakers Union. I hear the people that have concerns that live in the area, and I'm for the Bella project. When it comes down to it, Arizona is growing, and it's growing at a fast rate. They're shutting down these coal-fired power plants, and we got to replace that power. The latest and greatest technology is the gas-fired power plants. You mean, they used to have KERSIX? Now they're getting these smaller units, the LM 6000s. And they're producing power fast, using less water, stuff like that. There's a lot of advantages to bringing these plants. You mean, they generate money for workers, for the community, all that kind of stuff. When people say, "Not in my backyard," you got to get power from somewhere. You know what I mean? You don't want the coal-fired plants. You mean, now we got gas. You mean, they're bringing gas-fired plants. When you got solar, people don't like solar. You got to pick your poison. We need the power to replace that power. We got to get it somewhere until they start, you mean, they get something that's better and greater, like maybe small modular reactors, nuclear and stuff like that. There's so much industry coming into Arizona that, you know what I mean, like AI, data centers, warehousing, all that, the Lucid. You got to have power to power those companies, the businesses, even our homes, our air conditioning. You know what I mean? It comes down to a safety issue with Arizona heat. You know what I mean? People got to have air conditioning. You know what I mean? We don't want to start having brownouts and stuff, because we can't supply the power and stuff like that. I do understand where the people, what they're saying, "Not in my backyard." They're popping up everywhere. But you got to replace that power somehow. Any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you. Gary White. Not Barry White, Gary White.
Hello, my name is Gary White. I am a business representative for the Western States Regional Council Carpenter. We have over 90,000 members. We have over 5,000 members in Arizona, and probably 250 members to just live in this area. My guys are having to drive into Phoenix or Tucson every day. We have a certified apprenticeship. We've talked to the City Council before about trying to get local people to bring them on and get them trained to be able to do the work here, and literally drive right to a job. I'm in support of this for multiple reasons. They keep bringing up this BEST thing. Those are all air-cooled that caught on fire. This is a new technology on this BEST that's water-cooled, self-contained fire suppression system that's in it. The LM 6000s, if you don't know what they look like, go over to Desert Basin. I heard him say it earlier, Desert Basin. There's two LM 6000s there. Those are the two little ones that sit in front. Big difference on what the view is on that. And I just want you guys to know that the carpenters are in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Naylin. Dan Dooley.
Good afternoon, Chairman Goodman and Supervisors. Residents are customers of Pinellas County too, not just the landowners. I believe in landowners' rights, but also believe in responsible and compatible land use for the benefit of Pinellas County residents and Pinellas County as a whole. The Sun Hill Project, which is item 19, does not meet the proper growth of the county in an orderly manner and protect the area residents. The proposed land use may set a precedent with the Town of Florence that flanks this property on three sides. This could negatively impact the region. If the Town of Florence adds more industrial, retail, and multifamily housing, the region would be out of balance with the comprehensive plan, in my opinion. Homeowners in Magma Ranch can reasonably see the drastic change to the neighborhood and surrounding properties if this classification is approved. No one desires a battery energy storage system, warehouses, data center, or other commercial buildings, especially when the proper infrastructure is not in place. SRP Phase 3 off of Judd Road plans the construction of an LDES, Long Duration Energy Storage Facility. Do residents of this area need two potentially dangerous battery storage systems? Energy and water use, no doubt it's going to stress on existing utilities. Now, I looked over their mixed-use, in your packet you have it, they say, "These are the benefits." Make a long story short, "Designed to create a perfect buffer for employment use on the south." Well, what does that mean? What do you mean, "A perfect buffer"? It might not be. "Create job and convenience opportunities." What? And are they long-term? So I would just review that. That seems very generic to me. It's like, "Well, let's apply for it, get this thing done." Mixed-use developments are not needed in this area, in this particular area. We will soon be surrounded by mixed-use. Consider the number of apartments next to Walmart. Arizona Farms in North Felix, or Felix Road off Arizona Farms. I think they're proposing 815 units. Johnson Ranch, 181 units. Rancho Bella Vista, that's going to come about eventually, 252 units. Mixed land use designations are a gamble for residents. No one knows what they're really going to get.
Okay, thank you.
The, oh, I'm sorry. The benefits, the benefits are minimal. What is sacrificed to get unknown employment numbers, a BEST system, redundant retail, and a data center that consumes vast amounts of water and electricity? Traffic, noise, transmission lines are also going to be evaluated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there any others that wish to speak? I'm out of cards. I know we're not short of people, though. So, yes, ma'am. I'll allow you. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I am Rebecca Hovis, 793 East Silver Sword Lane, Queen Creek or San Tan, depending on which website you're looking for. Let's see. I appreciate the county considering solar energy generation as a great-granddaughter and a granddaughter of copper mill workers in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. I understand how difficult it can be for some previous industrial locations to be utilized. And I appreciate the BHP and Adventist project down in San Manuel to use that, since there isn't a whole lot that can be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close the public hearing process and discuss things between us. Okay. Anybody want to start off on this one? There's a few questions I've got, but maybe, you know, the board members, do you have any questions or anything? At this point, Supervisor Miller.
I just have a quick comment to start with. I searched my computer for Margarita, is it Levas or Levis?
Levis.
Levas. Nothing pops up. So, and I've already contacted my EA and going through our message book that we write down, anybody that leaves a message. I haven't found anything yet. But if you'll give me a phone number and/or an email, I'll be glad to respond.
Okay. Any, Supervisor McClure?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I heard some concerns about wells running dry and wells that have run dry. And the company explained that part of the agreement would be, you know, funding this group, the Citizens Advisory Committee. And part of the money that if wells ran dry, they could allocate funds to an individual to extend the depth of their well. Is that, can someone address that clearly from the company?
Yeah, we'll have the company come back up. There's a, I have a couple for you, too. So, address the bottom one, would you?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. Alex Hayes, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. That's correct, Supervisor Kavanaugh. The Citizen Working Group would have, would be funded with $4.1 million, and that funding can be directed by the community how they see fit. And if they wanted to spend those funds on new wells, they're more than welcome to.
Okay. And so, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, but I think if they receive money to increase the depth of their well, there'd also have to be taxes on it. But going back to the fire issue, I think folks have come up and talked about water cooling as opposed to air cooling. And touch on that briefly, and then talk about what equipment and what facilities you're going to have, should this be approved, for fire service, and who specifically, right now, are you contracted with?
Thank you, Supervisor. And if appropriate, we actually have a representative from Energy Safety Group. That's our fire safety consultant. And I think they can speak very specifically to these questions and kind of discuss some of the technicalities of the fire response. I can answer that last question about contracting for fire service. That would be with the city of Casa Grande. We, that contract is not signed today, but we have a letter from the city manager saying that they're open to providing that service, and it's just a matter of discussing the terms of that service. And, you know, when we come back for a zoning, we'd be happy to stipulate to that fire service being provided before any commercial operations. But happy to turn it over here.
Good afternoon. Brian Scholl with Energy Safety Response Group. I live in Gilbert, Arizona. 23 years in the fire service. As far as the fire protection systems that are required, I'm also on NPA 855. That's the national standard on batteries. So I know all about the codes, and this battery will be up to code. And that includes the water supply, which they're going to provide. There'll be hydrants on site, so when Casa Grande or whoever they contract with comes in, they will be able to use that water. There is no additional fire service equipment that we need to take care of a BEST fire. Currently, the way they're designed is they're tested, tested the cell level. So the cell level, if it goes from one cell to another cell, it fails. If it passes, it goes on to the module lever, bigger. If it propagates from one to another, it fails. Then it goes to the rack. If it goes from rack to rack, it fails. All these batteries will be listed, meaning they won't propagate. So our fire service folks now know, all we do is protect exposures and let it consume itself. That is the best action we can do. Did that answer your question, sir?
Well, not really.
Okay.
What I wanted to know is, do these batteries, are they constructed in a way that the liquid cooling can stop, slow or stop a potential fire before it happens?
Okay, I apologize. Yes. So there's actually two different systems. One is the liquid cooling system. Some of the other people talked about the old air-cooled. That's old technology. Escondido is one of the old technologies. All the newer technologies have a liquid-cooled system. In addition, all these batteries have a battery management system. This means we're watching each individual cell 24/7. If the cell goes out of temperature or voltage, we can shut down the cell, the module, the entire rack, or the entire cabinet, well before us fire service folks need to show up. So it's actually two different systems that are going to help with that.
All right, thank you.
Was that a better answer?
Yes. And then my last question about the citizens concerned about who, is there teeth in this arrangement? Is there a guarantee that this funding will be in place?
So, the Citizen Working Group initially came out of our ACC Arizona Corporation Commission approval. That was something that was negotiated during the line sighting committee process. During the actual Arizona Corporation Commission approval, the ACC wanted to remove those stipulations. We were on the record in that hearing, saying that we wanted them in place. So they were removed. We're still committed to providing that Citizen Working Group. We've stated so on the record there, stating so on the record here. And when we come back, you know, if we're approved today, if we come back to the zoning, we're more than happy to stipulate to that. But we are committed to providing that Citizen Working Group to make sure that we are, you know, not just good neighbors while we're asking for approval, but on an ongoing basis.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. And I don't know that it's free. Are you done, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Just real quick, I, one gentleman mentioned there'd be 5,000 to 10,000 people moving to that area in some set of years. So that's an interesting issue, because I can hear that coming years from now. Oh, my gosh, we don't want more development. We don't want more development. Okay, so that's going to come later. But it's also going to spur more development of a fire district and on and on, and incorporation into either Stanfield or Casa Grande. So that's just, I mean, that's just something I heard, and I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Miller.
This may go to your fire guy, but on these cooling systems for the batteries, aren't those sealed systems that
aren't those sealed systems that they, it's not like there's water just running out on the ground or out, that the sealed, they're a sealed system to cool these batteries?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes. It's a sealed system and the cooling is very similar to cooling, that's like, actually in your vehicles. So very similar.
It's like an antifreeze type thing, yeah.
Exactly, yes. Old technology was flammable liquids, we got rid of those a long time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? There's a few things I just wanted to, the fire suppression, you, you mentioned and talked about that. And that was, I think Supervisor Miller made sure you identified that each one of those units are privately contained, and so you, you addressed that. You know, I'm a native of Arizona. I grew up in East Mesa. I have a lot of family members in the town of Gilbert, which, before it was even a town. And I think it's APS that has a power plant on, I believe it's Ray and Val Vista. And for the longest time, I didn't even know it was there. Just the landscaping and everything around it, um, has softened, and that's been there for 30, 40 years. I'm dating myself, too, on, on top of that, so. And that's something that I think as we move forward in this direction, especially with us being in close proximity to where a lot of the subdivisions are, that we look at that type of, of landscape or something along those lines to help give it cover, to make it look beautiful, nice. If you look at that area right there, home values are, they've skyrocketed, just like they have in the entire state of Arizona. That's one thing. The other thing is, I represent an area that's heavily populated with, with people. It's heavily populated. And people, yes. When I took office, there was a lot of, a lot of challenges that that particular area has had over the years. So when you talk about an additional 10,000 or 15,000 homes over in this area right here, that's a lot. It's a lot of homes. And one of the biggest issues that I've had in my, in my district is that 85% of our population leaves the area to go to work. And early on, when I first came into this office, we probably had 85% of the people going into Maricopa County, which completely overtaxed our roads and infrastructure in a major way. And so one of the things that we've been, as a board, actively working on is bringing work centers, employment opportunities. We've done a pretty good job of doing that. And then with the closing of some of our power plants that we have right now, with the coal plants that are going to be shut down, you know, the bottom line is, is we're growing dramatically as a state and as a county. And where are we going to get the energy to do this? Where are we going to get the supply to do this? To somebody's point, we have been doing a lot of solar projects. We've done that. I've been in favor of some of these, one guy, gentleman, just mentioned the nuclear. At some point, I see that being a possibility at some point with some, especially with some of the coal plants that they're shutting down. And so, you know, one thing that is a major thing, in order for us to have economic growth, we've got to have the power, we've got to have the water resources, we have to have the infrastructure, everything has to be in place in order for us to grow economically. And so, you, you know, with, with what you're presenting, and right now with the administration currently, solar is a big thing. They're the ones that are pushing, you know, they've been pushing to shut down the coal plants. So we have alternatives, which is the solar. And so for me, I'm looking at these kind of projects and in the location where this one is in particular, 13 has a big thing for me as well. And so, but I, I think what I'd like to do is take each one of these individually as we discuss as a board. So we'll start with 13, and then we'll go to 14, take a vote on 13, then 14, and so on and so forth. Okay? Does that sound reasonable? Okay. So is there any other comments or anything on number 13? Any other questions that we need to ask?
Thank you Chairman.
Okay, seeing that there's none, do we have a motion moving forward on number 13?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13 as presented.
Do we have any stipulations on this one?
No, this is, this is just a comprehensive plan. This is not zoning, there's no stipulations, there's no requirements that'll be imposed. This just gives it somewhat of a land designation for future growth. Is that a good way to describe it, Mr. Counselor?
It is.
And so with that, and he's already made the motion, but with that, just so for clarification, a lot of the detail type stuff will be dealt with at a later time, like for instance, fire suppression.
That is correct. That'll all have to come through when they go through the zoning and the siding process and everything of that nature.
Okay. And then on another case, the question of noise came up that I want to bring up, but that, that's not on this one here.
Nope.
Okay.
But that would be similar at another point, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, just, and just for reiteration on 13, this is merely for possible land use, not for approving the item to be placed there or built, but just as a, just as a rezoning or a renaming of the comprehensive plan area. Is that correct? That's, I didn't state that well, Mr. Keller, but that's...
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McClure, this is requesting the major comprehensive plan amendment that would amend the land use and redesignate what that land was originally designated for. And so this will allow it to go forward. And that, as you correctly stated, you know, the next steps would be submit site plans, get zoning and so forth and have all of that. Again, more public hearing process through that happens.
Because it could be declined at that time.
That is correct.
Okay.
Or there could be additional stipulations that, that you as a board feel should be in place, that maybe the, the applicant at that time is not willing to agree to.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. This is requires super majority, so maybe we do a...
Roll call.
Roll call vote, thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
At this time, I'll vote aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, item number 14. This is for the, item 14, which is the, where's this located? Does anybody have any questions in regards to this particular one? This is, had an activity center to employment. Oh, this is the RV and boat storage. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the item number 14?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 14 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, oh, roll call again.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, item number 15. This will change the comprehensive plan to a, from low density residential to green energy. Any questions or anything from any of the members? Do we have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, oh, roll call again.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
This one, aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, item number 16, changing it from moderate low density residential to a natural gas fire power plant and a battery facility. Any questions or any comments by the board? Do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 16 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
I say nay.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, and item number 17, this will change the major comprehensive plan amendment proposal from a land use redesignated 1,000 acres to a, from moderate low density to green energy. Do we have a motion moving, do we have any questions or any comments by any board member? Motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 17 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, and item number 18, this is taking the major comprehensive plan and amending it from a land use plan and redesignate it to a land of high density, high intensity activity center to green energy production for utility scale. Any discussion or anything by any of the board members? Do we have an, um, motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item, item number 18 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Aye.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay, item number 19. This is amending the major comprehensive plan, uh, taking it from moderate low density residential of 80 acres and 16 acres to focus to develop a data center and mixed use residential developments. Do we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 19 as presented.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
For item number 19, because we had an updated resolution inclusive of the legal description for exhibits B and C, that needs to be included in the motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item number 19 and include exhibits B and C.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Serti?
Aye.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Nay.
Chairman Goodman?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Okay. You guys have been waiting a little while, huh? Okay, item number 20, this is the discussion approval, disapproval of a request from Santan Valley Inc. to circulate petitions for the purpose of placing the question of the incorporation of the town of Santan Valley on the, Arizona Before the Voters. We have, Tyler, state your name if you would.
Yeah, Tyler Hudgens, Santan Valley Inc. We are 501(c)(4) nonprofit. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, as you know, about a year and a half ago, we sent an intent, a letter to incorporate Santan Valley. And we just like to thank you first off for all the work the county has done to support our community. We know that you guys manage an area the size of Connecticut, and we are not a small community of 100,000 people. And so we know we draw a lot of resources and just appreciate all the ways that you've supported us. But in that notice of intent that we sent you a year and a half ago, we outlined a few items that we were going to work on between now and then. And so we met with neighborhoods and residents. We had over 11 town halls where we got to engage with the community, allow them to be able to ask some questions. We also developed some map boundaries of the Santan Valley incorporation area, allowed the public to be able to interact with that map, be able to provide suggestions and that sort of thing. We also worked on creating a minimal operating budget for the community, and really the goal of this was to show viability. We were able to see from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns that we will have at a minimum from the Arizona State Shared Revenue, $53 million to start, once we are a community, upwards up to 65 million. And so we were able to show the residents that of the minimum requirements of a city or a town, we would have the appropriate funding. We also began connecting with neighborhood, neighboring communities. And so we met with the mayors and city or town managers and staff from Queen Creek, Gilbert, Mesa, Chandler, Apache Junction, Coolidge, and Florence. And so we conducted those meetings and we're happy to say that Queen Creek, Chandler, and Mesa and Gilbert are supporting us. Queen Creek, Gilbert, and Mesa passed resolutions unanimously in support, and we're very appreciative of that. We also met with some large tract owned landowners such as the State Land Department, and those meetings went positively. The heart of our committee has been to represent this area and to be able to provide local control to residents. Residents are tired of having 20 car washes on every corner. Residents are tired of having to leave Santan Valley just to go eat at a restaurant with their family. Residents are tired of commuting outside Santan Valley for work. Residents are tired of their tax money being redirected to other cities and towns and wanting to come to fund their roads in their neighborhoods. And residents are tired of the unsafe roads and traffic. And again, we really appreciate what the county has done on all of those things. You guys have worked really hard in a very, very difficult situation, but we want to be able to take control of that for ourselves. And so we are confident as the committee that we have met all the legal requirements in order for you guys to authorize us to start circulating petitions. And so we believe that our team that we have in place is able to get this done and to be able to get over the finish line, so that voters can have a choice. And so to the residents, if we're approved, we've got six months to get the petitions done. And so local control starts today for Santan Valley. And so, once approved, residents, we're going to need your support. After this, on November 16th, we will have a kickoff event at Poston Butte High School on Saturday, November 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Would love for the community to be able to come out and support this effort. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any questions by anybody? Okay, can I have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair?
Chairman, if I may, before we make that motion, just for the record, the supporting documents have been submitted to the clerk, and also those supporting documents are attached to the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
So by, Mr. Chair, I move, we approve item 20 as presented with supporting documents.
Second.
Okay. You beat me. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Go get them.
Got it.
Let me sign first. Oh, wait, I'm not supposed to say anything.
Are you doing them after?
Yeah, yeah, in my individual capacity, there we go. Okay, Brother Todd, number 21, discussion approval of the intergovernment agreement between the Ochkin Indian Community and Penala County for building plans.
Good afternoon, Chairman Goodman, Supervisors. I'll be short and sweet on this one. This is basically a renewal of a previous contract that expired March of this year. This new contract will have a five-year term, and it's really focused on plan review and inspection services between Penala County and the Ochkin Indian Community. Obviously, there's a lot of growth that's continuing. Some of the features built into this include cost recovery, the ability to use four different contractors as well, and then some modifications to the indemnification language. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Question? Yes.
Contractors, are you referring to engineering firms to, to do these inspections for us?
do these inspections for us?
Correct. There's four firms listed in the actual IGA.
Just for, just for the record. Thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 21 as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Get her done. Item 22, discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 1-0, accepting a quick claim deed from the Public County Free Library District and entering into a lease agreement in Supervisor District 4. Joe.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board Supervisors. Joe Ortiz, Penalt County Development Services Managing Director. Hopefully, I'll be quick with this one as well. This item is, the objective of this item is to clean up a couple parcels that are one is owned by Penalt County, the other was owned by the Library District. And this item relates to the agenda item that you guys heard earlier, Agenda Item 9 through the Library District. In that motion, you conveyed a parcel of land that was in the Library District's name to Penalt County. Back history here real quick. There's two pieces of property that are joined together here off of Butte Street in the town of Florence, which is utilized by the public, by the Library District. They have a building on it. That building actually was built way back when. And that building was built over these two parcels. And our hope is to combine both parcels, so it gets it cleaned up into just one parcel. And it makes it it makes it into our standards of having that building not be overlapping into two parcels. So that's just a cleanup item that we're trying to do. So basically, this item itself is to accept that quick claim that you earlier conveyed to Penalt County. Accept that into Penalt County's name and enter into a lease agreement with the Library District to lease it back to them for their use. It's a three-year lease with one-year additional terms as needed for five, five more terms, five more additional years.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If you recall, when you did the Library District, I told you that there would be a subsequent item coming forward at a future meeting. This is that future meeting.
Felt a week ago, but
You meant later today.
Okay. Is, so the way I'm reading this, will we need to take each of those items separately and vote on them separately, like the quick claim? Will we need to do that separately from the other one, or?
This is just one agenda item.
We already did the quick claim.
The one was the Item C on the Library District.
So literally, it's not next week, it's today. Okay.
Two more hours is the
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve item 22 as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Unanimous.
Thank you.
It's been quick, too. Okay. Item number 23, discussion approval, disapproval of the request to create a new job classifications to meet the staffing needs of departments in order to provide necessary services. This is Mary Ellen. Good morning.
Chairman, good afternoon. Chairman Goodman, members of the board. I'm Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager and HR Director. Today, we're seeking your approval to create new classifications in order to meet the needs of our elected offices and county-appointed departments. These classifications include the creation of the Sheriff's Office IT Manager, a locksmith, a licensed behavioral health counselor, clinical services manager for the judicial branch, and a senior classification. These, by approving the classifications, you are not approving creating the positions. That's done through a separate process. The funding for the positions has already been approved, and this simply allows for the appropriate classification to meet the essential functions of those jobs. The classifications have been detailed in materials provided as attachments, and we're prepared to provide a quick overview of each. In fact, joining me today is Kim Verdugo, our HR Compensation Manager. However, we will respectfully defer to you whether you feel there is a need to do the brief overview before taking your time after a long day and doing so.
Board's prerogative. Has everybody got it? Are we good? Okay, we're good. So let's, can I get a motion then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 23 as presented.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous.
Thank you.
You did all that work, and we didn't let you. Thank you.
We just got another one now.
Read, you read it to us. Okay, number 24. Discussion approval, disapproval, revisions to the following Penalt County policies. And if you want to go over those, those would be great. I won't steal your thunder. Mary Ellen.
Oh, no. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Steal my thunder away. I am Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager, HR Director. Today, we're seeking your approval to revise county policies in order to ensure they're current, relevant, and legally compliant. These policies include Policy 2.50 Electronic Mail and Scheduling System, Retitled to Electronic Mail, Instant Messaging and Calendar Systems, Policy 6.80 Vehicle and Equipment Operation, Policy 7.30 Vacation and Terminal Leave, Retitled to Vacation and Terminal Vacation Leave, and Policy 7.96 Employee Recognition and Awards. The policy changes are detailed in the attachments. Generally, the changes reflect our efforts to apply consistent formatting throughout county policies, eliminate redundant language, clarify roles and responsibilities, and reorganize the information for readability. Two policy changes reflect our commitment to the employees of Penalt County, and as such, I am going to take the time with your permission to highlight them. The first is Policy 7.30 Vacation and Terminal Vacation Leave has been rewritten to give employees who are retiring from the county and meet the requirements for normal retirement the option to receive a lump sum payout on their final paycheck for all vacation hours accrued and sick time that has been converted to vacation hours. Currently, all hours over 360 must be taken as terminal leave whereby the individual remains a county employee in a leave status until that time is exhausted. We believe that giving the employees the options to have the payout for time accrued and for sick leave that they accrued that was not used and therefore converted gives them, after committing their career to Penalt County, the best choices. And they deserve that for their commitment and tenure and contributions to our community.
So, Ms. Shepherd, just a quick question. Mr. Chair.
You bet.
In that, so when they stay on terminal leave, you're still under the county. They're still beholden to the county and anything that goes on. Is that, I'm not stating that correctly, but you know what I'm trying to say.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor McClure, let me attempt to respond to that. Yes, I do know what you're saying. While an employee is on terminal leave, they are a county employee and therefore subject to the policies and procedures of Penalt County.
That's, that's what I meant. And, and the other is that, that by paying them out, then that opens that position up in that department rather than keeping it open or sort of fill. I mean, we're cleaning up the roles is basically what we're doing.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor McClure, thank you for mentioning that because that is a significant additional advantage. When an employee is on terminal leave and occupies the position, there isn't a position to be filled. If an employee chooses the option to be paid out, that vacates the position, and therefore, the department is in a position to fill that. It also allows for more planned transition time and succession planning. So there are benefits to the retiring employee because they can exercise the option. There are benefits to the coworkers remaining because there's an opportunity to fill the vacancy.
Mr. Chair, also, and so this doesn't disrupt cash flow of that department in as much as I understand that there's a separate bucket of money to pay this out rather than general fund or from that department's budget. Is that correct?
Chairman Goodman, Supervisor McClure, that is correct. There is a separate bucket of money.
We have lots of buckets like that.
That is set aside for these payouts. However, in the policy, we have added language that has the appointing authority of working with budget and finance to ensure that there is sufficient funding to cover both the payout and the filling of the vacant position. So it'll be a part of the collaborative process that currently exists today.
And to jump ahead on Policy 7.96 Employee Recognition and Awards, does that mean that we have to have more of those and more pictures?
I hope so. Chairman Goodman, my apologies, Supervisor McClure, thank you for that segue. The second policy, 7.96, increases the amount that can be spent on awards and recognition to $100 consistent with information that we find in IRS documents. With respect to de minimis, the current limit is 50. But it also adds departments and elected offices to the policy to ensure it's understood that rewards and recognition of county employees is something supported and encouraged in all departments and with all deserving employees.
Thank you.
One, one other quick, I guess. You know, we, we've been able to hold our employees for quite a while. But is this going to put a run on the bank, so to speak? And they're going to want to retire quick? Are we worried about that? I, I know we're not. I'm just, I don't see any employees doing that, but still.
Chairman Goodman, do we envision there's going to be a run on retirees? They currently had the advantage given to them by Penalt County that we don't see in any other counties or even any of our comparators to get that sick leave payout. So depending on years of service, they get paid out for the sick leave at a certain percentage. So, and they also receive their vacation time. It's just wasn't a matter of, did they get it? It was either spread out over time or they get it in a lump sum. So they're not going to run to the bank all of those eligible for retirement. Please don't make a lie of me in front of the board. Please hang in there. Because we are also encouraging recognition and awards to make sure that you want to stay because you know this is the best place to be.
Okay, thank you.
These two policies that I highlighted are, if approved, will be effective November 1st. The additional policies listed there, again, we are prepared to go over those if you would like to have happen today. We've spoken to the fact they've been modified for clarity, updated information. But they are also fully detailed in your packages. So if you want to take the time, I will defer to you as to your wishes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions in regards to any of that? I think we're good there. Okay.
If I may, Chairman, I would like to acknowledge our HR Deputy Director, Colleen Campbell, who's here today, our Risk Manager, Deb Sumdal, who is here today, and our Benefits and Wellness Manager, Danielle Watkins, who have also joined me. They are prepared to present. They are grateful that they don't have to. So with that, we appreciate your consideration and ideally approval of these changes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, excuse me, I move we approve item 24 as presented.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? What was that Supervisor Kavanaugh? It was an aye? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 25.
Six, we've already done that.
No, Mr. Chairman.
This is an action item, isn't it?
There's an action item, item 25. And I can just, you know, give you a brief rundown of this, and I think Leo will take it from my handoff. This is an item to go ahead and continue to utilize outside counsel. If you remember, County Attorney's Office has a conflict on this matter regarding the report that was presented by SNL, I think, earlier this month for the board regarding allegations concerning the 2024 primary and certain operations of the Elections Department. This is just mainly to help you, should the need continue, to go forward with their services based on anything that may happen out of that. And I'll ask Mr. Luda if he has anything to add.
Thanks, Chairman. I guess I would just say that this helps us going forward, in my opinion, for the efficiency effectiveness of the management of all of this going forward. These, this firm and their subject matter experts have been responsive, have been timely, have been effective. They're familiar with our staff, the stakeholders, our processes, our equipment, and everything. So for them to continue on in any other matters would be very efficient and effective for us. Otherwise, somebody else has to come, get caught up to speed, would be an unknown, and, and to me, wouldn't be as efficient and effective with it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item 25 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose?
Abstain. Abstain.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. So now we're on to item number 26. Disapproval to direct outside counsel, SNL and Wilmore, to file on any necessary pleadings in the Republican National Committee versus Fontez.
Chair Ken Valkman, Penalt County Attorney. I can't help but make light of the last couple ones, as I'm not going to be here in two weeks, so I don't get that payout. And I heard Supervisor McClure say that there are buckets of gold hiding around here. If you could direct me to some of those buckets of cash on my way out.
Money, not gold. Money, not gold. It's different.
It all spends the same. In all seriousness, we're here on item 26. As this board is undoubtedly aware, and should be noted that we did discuss item 26 when we convened into executive session earlier today. Ultimately, I'm going to ask this board to withdraw item 26, but I'd like to kind of put on the record as to why with the chair's permission.
You bet. Go ahead.
So Chair, as, as you are all aware, there is a pending litigation going where the national and state, RNC, are essentially suing the Secretary of State saying that the election procedural manual was not properly vetted and that there are deficiencies in it. Contemporaneously, we have our own lawsuit that's going on. And there was some belief that it would make sense that perhaps we would sort of join those two together and litigate it as one sort of complete case. But after communications with our counsel and our counsel speaking directly with the, the RNC and their team, essentially, their case is so far ahead of ours in timing that there's nothing that we can do. We couldn't even file an amicus brief, which is a friendly brief saying, hey, we think they're right, because the timing has already elapsed. So as it sits currently in the Division II Court of Appeals, there's nothing that we can do to further that case. And for strategic reasons, we believe that, that we should not join that, instead fight our own fight. And then if unfortunately, we were both unsuccessful, we can reconsider it. But as we sit here today, it, it doesn't make sense for us to join because we really can't do anything. can't do anything. We can't file anything, and essentially, we would be paying attorney fees just for somebody to sit by and, and watch. So, as your counsel, I don't think it makes sense at that, at this point, to join in, but you do have our assurances, as well as outside counsel's assurances, that they are working hand in glove with the RNC, they are communicating regularly, we are being updated. And in the event that an opportunity comes where we can work together, it, we would, it would be our intention to come back to you and, and get that permission.
So, Mr. Chair, just say, so, basically, what you're saying is our hands are tied because of timing?
Correct. They filed, they initiated, initiated their suit like in the spring, whereas ours was initiated just six weeks ago. So, they are five months ahead of us in the, in the actual case itself. That, that's what tied our hands.
And that's how we, okay.
And, but we watch with great interest and keep in communication.
Certainly. And outside counsel's aware of that, even our team is, is keeping in communication. I know we've spoken with, you know, Ms. Rodriguez, who I know is, is here from our county chair. I know that we've spoken with Gina, there's so many Genas in my office right now, I apologize, the state chair, RNC chair. So, we've been in direct communication. There's certainly no animosity, there's just no benefit right now. So, given that, it's my recommendation that we actually withdraw item 26.
Okay. And that's just that, if we do that, that's the motion. Okay.
Yes.
That's fine.
Supervisor, Supervisor Sertie.
Yeah, Kent, it might be confusion, this is so similar to a case that just happened. And if you look on your news feed in Pinal County, you'll see Adrian Fontes versus Pinal County. So, this is not related, that's something separate, taking its own life.
Chair, Supervisor, that is correct. We're still fighting that. So, that, that matter is still proceeding forward. The Adrian Fontes versus Pinal County, we are litigating, that is assigned to the Division II Court of Appeals. It is our intention to continue to litigate that. The real basic argument is he's saying what we did is illegal, and we're saying, no, we did nothing illegal. We're acting properly, and that, there's a legitimate legal dispute, and that's being litigated. It'll go to the Division II Court of Appeals. Regardless of which side wins, it's likely to go to the Arizona Supreme Court, and obviously, we'll keep you and the public updated with all steps of litigation.
So, it was like 10 or 11 hours ago when we discussed that, and I said I wanted to talk about it more. So, so, do you think we'll have an opportunity to get our thoughts out there in this forum, or will it all be in court?
Chair, Supervisor, I believe getting your opinions out there, there will come a time and place. With all due respect, I don't think it's right now. I, I think we can do it in this forum, but while we're still formulating, while the Court of Appeals still hasn't officially taken up our appeal, I think it would be premature for us to start talking about everything. I think once the case has been presented, once all of the argument has taken place and there's no danger that we're somehow going to be speaking about a live case, then I think it would be who, the public and this board, to discuss what we did, why we did it, the rationale behind it. But I, I think the litigation should take place before we start having those very public conversations.
Thank you. But I think in, maybe a more defined question would be, can we give specifics as to why this is it? Why we're in a battle over this? Because we're a precinct base?
Chair, yes. I, I mean, at a broad picture, yes, I, there's nothing wrong with, with discussing the, the position that this board's taken. Everything's public record.
Okay.
I mean, we filed a response, we litigated this in the Pinal County Superior Court. We had a Pinal County Superior Court Judge, Delia Neal, who heard the case. She kind of ruled half in favor for us, half in favor for the other side. They appealed the part that ruled against the Secretary of State's office, and we appealed the part where she ruled against us. The Secretary of State's advanced their argument to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court heard the case, the Supreme Court ruled and basically said, no. The Pinal County Superior Court Judge got that portion correct. So, where she agreed with us, Supreme Court said she was right. Where she disagreed with us, that is what's outstanding, and that's the issue of whether what we did was illegal, whether we refused to allow the accessible voter devices to be used as essentially vote centers. That, that's what this comes down to. Very, very huge, lots of issues boils down to a very simple question. Can the Secretary of State's office force Pinal County to use our accessible voter devices to allow any person to walk into any one of our precincts and vote their ballot? And our position is, no, they cannot make us do that. And their position is, yes, we can. That, that boils down, that is what this argument is about.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add on to what Kent has to say, one of the significant points is that it's our position that the EPM doesn't say and doesn't have the ability to, to direct us to do what the Secretary of State is doing, is requiring us to do because it conflicts with other statutes that are out there. And if there's a conflict between the statutes and the EPM, the statutes will prevail. So, it's our interpretation of the EPM that, that we are saying is correct. He's essentially saying, no, your interpretation of the Elections Procedure Manual is wrong, and this is what I believe it means, and this is what I'm directing you to do.
Okay.
Kent, when was that, that there was a ruling that precincts won?
Chair, Supervisor Sertie, so, clear back in 2018, the idea of precinct voting was actually taken up. There was a challenge in Arizona, saying that precinct voting inherently was unconstitutional, and it had disparate impacts on people. So, our then Attorney General, Mr. Burnovich, Mark and his team, litigated all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. In 2018, the United States Supreme Court came out and said precinct voting has its purpose, it is constitutionally valid, it is appropriate, it is lawful. So, that was 2018 that the US Supreme Court said that, and our laws have not materially changed since that date.
Could I, could I bother you to give us like a one-page summary of that?
I will certainly do it, and those that are listening or interested in it, it's Burnovich versus the Democratic National Committee. The ruling is in 594 U.S. 647, specifically pages 661 and 679 through 680 is what they're quoting, but it starts at 594 U.S. 647. That is the US Supreme Court case. It actually, the ruling came down in 2021. So, it initiated in 2018, it has a 2018 case number, so I apologize. 2021 is when the United States Supreme Court said precinct base is lawful. So, and, in large part, that's what we're relying on, and it does help a little bit that the team that represents us, the SNL and Wilmer team that was, I believe, our County Manager spoke highly of moments ago, were actually the ones that helped litigate this. So, it was the Attorney General's Office along with SNL and Wilmer, and those same litigants were the ones that actually represented the state. So, I mean, we literally have the best of the best right now on this particular issue.
Okay. So, I really would like a copy of that.
Absolutely. We'll send you the whole thing, and then I'll try and give you a kind of a one-page summary as well.
That'd be great.
Because it's, it's a little dense reading.
Okay.
So, for the purposes of this, the motion would be that.
Withdraw.
That item 26 is withdrawn.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Item number, thank you. Item number 27, this is a discussion approval, disapproval, to review the application and supporting documents of Christian Glover and William Griffin for consideration of appointment to the constable position in the Western Pinal Justice Court. I'm seeing here, we probably ought to go into executive session to have this discussion a little bit further, correct? Okay. Can I get a motion moving forward, then?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recess the regular meeting and convene executive session.
That motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? We are now in executive session. Get a, a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move we close executive session and reconvene the regular meeting.
We have a mo, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We're out of executive session, so we're back to item number 27, discussion approval, disapproval, to review the application and supporting documents and to appoint to the constable position in the Western Pinal County Justice Precinct Four. So, any further deliberation or discussion in regards to 27 before we make a motion? Do we have a motion going forward, then?
Mr. Chairman, I move to make Mr. Griffin the constable for the Western District.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Congratulations, Mr. Griffin.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any future agenda items.
Uh, item number 28, any future agenda items from any of the board members that they'd like to have? Yes.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I have something after he says something.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You need to direct Mr. Griffin to meet with Natasha and her staff. May, I don't know if they're going to have time to do it tonight, but there's some paperwork he's going to have to sign, he's going to have to take an oath of office, have all of that details, and he'll have to go through the clerk of the board to finalize the paperwork and all of that.
Okay. Sounds good.
He said, do it.
What?
Say what he just said, just directing.
There you go, Mr. Griffin. With them afterwards.
And then.
You got a future agenda item.
Mr. Glover, thank you so much for applying.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, thanks for hanging on. Mr. Chair, I have a future agenda item. Kent, we've, we've talked about a legal opinion if a disagreement arose in future between ourselves and, and county, you know, attorney's advice. I'd like to request that the county attorney provide us with an opinion of this board or any other county-elected official, the ability to seek outside legal advice on matters that we might not see eye to eye on with the county attorney, a disharmony issue, I believe.
I understand, and absolutely, we'll work with you, and we'll get, we'll get an, an opinion out. Most likely, I'm going to probably, given the context, I'll probably seek outside counsel's opinion to actually provide that to you, but I, I understand the question, I understand the gist, and we'll get you something in writing official.
Yeah, no, outside counsel would be good. I mean, not, not that I don't like you and all, but that would be good because it's a third party, not biased.
Correct. I mean, you're essentially saying, if I don't agree with what I'm telling you, I'm trying to tell you how to work your way around me.
That's right, that's what I want you to tell me.
I think outside counsel probably absolves any potential appearance of impropriety.
Okay. With that being said, we're done. Thank you.